Appreciate you all being here, particularly our high school principals and secondary administrators. Really, really appreciate you being here. At this time, we will stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. We'll call the meeting to order. The purpose of this study session is to do some progress monitoring on the board goals. And our work tonight is the most important work that we do. Because as a school system, it is our responsibility to improve what kids know and what kids can do. It's really that simple and quite that difficult as well. So what I'd like to talk about tonight, and it's kind of an introduction, if we may, is to briefly talk about how we got here and what our purpose is, what our aspirations are, and then how we'll proceed tonight. How we got here? Well, during the June 5th board meeting, we had, actually, it was our retreat. And the board discussed support to move towards student outcomes focused governance. And this work is based on A.J. Krable's book, Great on Their Behalf. The board has decided to do a book study, and using the book study, we are working towards student outcomes. Because board goals that are based in student outcomes represents the commitment of this board in collaboration with the district and school leaders to improve student outcomes. The June 5th discussion led to the development and board approval on July 11th of three board goals that are based in student outcomes. In summary, our first board goal is on proficiency in English literature achievement, as well as math proficiency, and then improvement of the graduation rate. After the adoption of our board goals, Dr. O'Reilly worked with administration to develop a progress monitoring calendar of relevant data for each goal to engage the board in regularly scheduled progress monitoring related to these student outcomes on English language proficiency, math proficiency, as well as the graduation rate. So our premise tonight, and I want you to think of these two words, continuous improvement. That's what we're monitoring, continuous improvement. Because schools exist to improve student outcomes. Improving student outcomes is dependent on the quality of instruction and increasing that quantity of the quality instruction. And just like a teacher monitors continuous improvement in his or her classroom, this board must monitor continuous improvement of the district. It's just good practice. Our governing board must engage in effective progress monitoring. And I want to make sure that everyone understands that this is checking in with our administrators to making sure our reality, our students' reality matches our goals. This is going to be a conversation between the board and the superintendency to advance continuous improvement. We'll evaluate the alignment between the board goals and what is student reality? What strategies are in place to help students make progress? What's working and what's not? We have clearly agreed upon data. We will be scheduling regularly review of that data. And we will evaluate what's working and what's not based on evidence. The information that is presented will impact what's going to happen next. We are checking in with our schools through their administrators, through district works and the information that we are presented so that we can support the work of our administrators, so we can support the work of the educational professionals in our classrooms. This is the board's position, a position of support based in student outcomes. So tonight, we have a study session based on grades. First quarter grades have come out. And our board goal that aligns with the grades is that 83% of students in the 2024 cohort will graduate on time in four years, as evidenced by their G or graduate code in synergy honor before June 3rd, 2024. What became very obvious to us, however, was the importance of freshman year in making sure that our students graduate. So to begin with, we thought we'd take a smaller slice and take a look at freshman grades at this time to understand the importance particularly of four subject areas: literacy, Algebra I, world history, and biology; determinants, critical determinants, on whether our students are on the path to graduation starting their freshman year. So the information that we are going to be presented are a number of slides based on the grades. The data that will be presented from the district at a district level will be presented by Dr. Strom tonight. We have a number of slides in the presentation where we are looking at challenges, the student reality, challenges that our students are facing, what the impact of those challenges are, and then what are some of the strategies that are being implemented, some at a district level, but oftentimes best at a site level. And that's why our outstanding principals are here with us tonight. Our role as board members are to ask the strategic questions. Strategic questions. Not the technical questions, not the tactical questions, but strategic questions based in what's working and what's not. So at this time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to open it up to Dr. Strom, who will make a short presentation on the data. And this data, again, please remember, are grades. Grades in the four core subject areas that the freshmen have achieved so far. After Dr. Strom's short presentation, we will take a look at the slides that talk about challenges our students face, the impact of those challenges, and then the strategies that are being used. And at that point, the board will open it up to board discussion. And hopefully, because we've had some time, not a lot, and I apologize for that. This is a new thing, this is a new venture for our board. But we're hoping that the board has some questions and that through those questions, we can take a deeper dive and maybe even realize some other study sessions that we need to better understand the progress that our students are making because of the quality of instruction that is occurring in our classrooms every day for every student. So, Dr. Strom, would you like to start us off, please, with your presentation? And I want to say, I appreciate the work it took for you to prepare this data, for your team to prepare the data. This is a heavy lift, it's a different lift, but I think we all agree, it's important. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Board President, Board President, members of the board. I'll start this presentation off right now, if we can get on the screen. And I do want to recognize, you know, we believe in teaming in Mesa Public Schools, and certainly, the RNE team did a lot of work in iterations. There was an iterative process, and every time, we think we got better through each iteration on this presentation. All right, so I don't think I need to cover this slide, as it was covered in what you just discussed. These are the board goals. And we'll start this off by just talking about the chart in general. Percent of classes receiving a certain grade. Let's talk about why the language is percent of classes real quick. This is in English, 7th through 12th grade. The language is percent of classes because of the fact that some kids take multiple English classes in a given year out of their choice. This does not include credit recovery classes, but sometimes kids choose to opt into two EN classes, and we didn't want to not include those. There are not a lot of duplicate kids taking classes, so this could be called percent of students, but in the name of transparency, we thought we'd call it percent of classes because one kid could be taking two classes. And to read the data real quick, 34% of the kids in an English class across 7th through 12th grade are getting As in 21, 22 as of quarter 1. 34% of kids in 22, 23 in quarter 1 are getting As, and 31% this last year, sorry, this current year are getting As in quarter 1. I'm not going to read the rest of those, but you can see a trend down in the F letter grades from 15, 14 to 12. And the next natural question across English grades may be the next slide. Oops, I'm clicking. Thank you. The next slide, which is, well, what about mastery? Mastery is defined by, there's a mastery report that was created in this district, and the mastery report aligns to kids getting As, Bs, and Cs in their English class. And so percent of mastery is simply the percent of kids getting an A, B, or C, and this slide breaks it down by grade level. It basically says, 80% of our kids in 7th grade are getting As, Bs, and Cs in their English classes that they're taking in 21, 22 quarter 1, 79% in 22, 23 in quarter 1, and 75% this year in quarter 1 of 23, 24. You can go off to the right-hand side and see 80 to 79 to 81 for our seniors across the last three quarters. And you can see why 9th grade becomes pivotal. This is national level research that would suggest this. Transition grades are tough. And while the trend is upward at 64 to 70 to 73% getting As, Bs, and Cs as of quarter 1 in 9th grade, if you look across what's the general grade level that students struggle with, it's at 9th grade. Although, there's been increases the last two years in 9th grade. If you go down to the next slide, you have quarter 1 grades for English for 9th graders. That's why we pinpointed 9th graders in this presentation is because the data suggests at 9th grade, and the national research would back that 9th grade is kind of the year that kids tend to struggle in that transition. And here's the 9th grade trends, percent of students receiving, because we only looked at their 9th grade English class, and it is not common at all for a 9th grader to have two English classes. And that's why the Y-axis changes in language a little bit there. And so you have 18% of our freshmen receiving an F as of quarter 1 in 21, 22. 18% of our freshmen receiving an F in 22, 23 quarter 1, and 13% receiving an F in this year. So that's a positive trend in terms of mastery, that our F rate has gone down. The question becomes, those Fs have generally probably become Ds, and the question now becomes how to take those Ds and turn them into As, Bs, and Cs as we continue on the intervention track at the 9th grade level. Next slide, let's see if this is working. There we go. We're going to skip that slide, that's the board discussion side of things. We're going to quickly go into mathematics, same type of trend. By the way, we did three slides for math and English, because that's the board goal. And then we wanted you to know, we're paying attention on the science and the world history side as well. So here's math grades, percent of classes taking. I wish I would have started with this one because of the fact that it's more common that kids take two classes in math. Particularly in their senior year, they may double up in calculus and statistics, if that makes sense to you. So that's why it's percent of classes up the Y-axis. And you can see the trends there for quarter 1 math grades. And we tried to align these graphs according to Great on Their Behalf, written at a 6th to 8th grade reading level, really easy to consume because we want the majority of these type of study sessions on student outcomes to be conversational dialogue with the board on what's working, what's not working, and how we can get better. So we're trying to make these very easy to consume for the governing board. I do want you to know, we can go into a lot of detail, and that's what we do as an administrative team, is get into the detail of where these break down and how these break down. On to the next slide. We have quarter 1 mastery of math by grade level. Once again, you see the 9th grade level, positive trends, quarter 1 over quarter 1 over quarter 1 over the last three school years. But there's a reason why, you know, we emphasize 9th grade out of the gate. And there's another data set that has been made available through some report outs in our reporting that we give to Dr. Forless, and that's the F rate of at least one F for students throughout our 9th grade level. And we know that about 25% of our freshmen this year are getting at least one F. Well, if 25% of our freshmen in quarter 1 are getting at least one F, your graduation rate now becomes something very difficult to achieve, and you're going to have to go into credit recovery mode right away. And so the emphasis on 9th grade with Algebra I and ELA hopefully is prevalent to you in that we've had two years of data where the trend would be 9th grade's our struggle, although the trend's been better. And we're hoping that as those 9th graders become 10th graders, those 10th graders become 11th graders, our graduation rate's going to creep up well past 83%. So, you know, we're paying attention to trends across grade level, I guess, is the big message there. Quarter 1 grades in Algebra I for 9th grade, you can see here. Algebra I's the hiccup for a lot of students, and 18% of our kids in quarter 1 are getting an F in Algebra I. It was 26 and 27% in the prior two years. So this trend's down, that's a positive trend down. And now it becomes, hey, how do we get those kids into the A, B, and C range? If we keep on trending forward, we have biology that we're paying attention to. There's two classes that we take in freshman science. There's a physical science course and then a biology course that are taken. And so this is the biology look-through because the majority of kids are in biology and not in the other course. So this is the biology look-through. And once again, we have a trend in Fs down, trend in Cs upwards, and that is the biology data on a quick level. And then world history grades, from the history perspective, if you're not on track in the core, it's going to be tough to make your 16A board credits. It's going to be tough to make your 22 credits that you need via governing board approval. So that's why we looked at the core in these. And you have the same trend in 9th grade with the Fs in world history coming down. And you can see that there's a little trend in Bs going upwards in that graph. This is, you know, as short as the data needs to be according to Great on Their Behalf for us to generate the discussions upon what positive things and what things we can improve on, and what opportunities for improvement there are on behalf of the school district in related to the goals set forth in ELA math and graduation rate.
Then that was all in eight minutes, I timed it. Way to go, Matt. Thank you very much, Dr. Strom. And again, I appreciate the graphs because the graphs can tell a good story and can quickly help people to attain the data. And, but I appreciate the explanation of the data and why that data is important and why it was relevant to our board goal. That's crucial, and for you to have accomplished that in eight minutes, bravo, kind sir. Really, really, really appreciate that very much. Dr. Forless, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to you where we look at the slides that can generate discussion in the two disciplines, English Language Arts as well as math, and then Biology and History. And it's those slides that I think should generate the discussion by the board members in particularly assessing strategies, what's working, what's not working, and if it's working, how can we replicate it? And if it's not, how can we improve it, tweak it, so that it does work for students? So we want to go at a district level first, and then, kind sirs and ladies, we'll be turning it over to you to get specific examples of what you're doing at your schools, because great things are happening at your schools. And we want to hear about the, shall we say, the opportunities. I know, I wrote it down. Opportunities for improvement that you're providing your kids at your schools. That's what we're all about, is improvement. Dr. Forless.
So President Hutchinson and members of the board, I just want to give a little background about how our teams work. So we are a superintendency team that you see sitting up here on the dais and close by. Many on our superintendency team are part of what we call instructional leadership. So instructional leadership is led by Mrs. Williams, our area assistant superintendent, our assistant superintendent for special education and for teaching and learning. And then we have core directors that come in, and they meet regularly to pour over data, talk about instructional design, talk about what we need to be doing to advance the outcomes of our students. So what you see today is a high-level summary of the common denominators of what is working and where the challenges are across grade levels and by content. So again, when you've got six comprehensive high schools, we've got an alternative school, and then we're also thinking about our junior highs. We're going to focus just on high school this evening. When you think about what is the common denominator, it's kind of hard to summarize all of that on to one slide. So we gave it our best stab, and again, as Mrs. Hutchinson said, this is an iterative process, and we are, this is our first attempt at doing this kind of work in this fashion. So love to hear feedback. One thing that we continue to hear across schools is that a large challenge is chronic absenteeism. When kids aren't in school, we know that the challenge is when kids are not in school, they do not have access to instruction, to curriculum, and most importantly, to those academic interventions that they need. So what we are doing at a district level is we have formed a district attendance task force. I've provided a draft for you of what that looks like. We will be implementing consistent systems around how do we support and intervene early and often? Lots of communication with parents around what we need to do to make sure that kids are in school. We also know that when we take a look at mastery, what you saw today is quarter 1 grades. And remember that quarter 1 grades are after that first nine weeks. And in the life of a high school student, credit is not earned until the semester. So what you see today is that snapshot. Credit earned is what we pay attention to towards graduation. And so that will be coming in the next nine weeks at the end of the semester. So what often happens is kids don't necessarily understand what their grades are. What does it mean to have an A, a B, a C, a D, or an F? And we take a lot of look at the research that aligns between grading practices and proficiency or mastery of content. And we have looked at this for decades, and for decades, there's been challenges and gaps. That grades tell us one thing, but then we take a look at a mastery assessment or a proficiency assessment, and you might have a student that has had As and Bs but is not proficient on a standardized assessment. So where we, how do we help to fill in those gaps? So one of the, so those are those variances in measurement. So one of the next steps is we do have three schools that are bravely embarking upon standard-based grading. So communicating to students, what are the standards that you need to know and how are you progressing in your understanding of those standards? Not to this arbitrary thing called an A, B, C, or D. And then I think that in the world that we live in, we constantly are struggling with this idea that kids are asking the question, why? Why do I need to know this in English? Why do I need to know this in Algebra I? Why do we need to know it in Biology and World History? And so the impact of not really understanding the why, what we often see is a lack of relevance, and that is observed in disengaged kids. So the action steps that we are taking across our high schools is working very intentionally of creating teams of teachers that are working together to personalize learning, and we are building smaller learning environments within our large high schools. And that is seen as in the development of pathways, curricular pathways organized around an academy. That academy provides relevance, that pathway then provides a curricular outlook and path for children that include not just academic courses, but also work-based learning, opportunity for earned college credit, as well as industry certifications along the way. So that is the big work of our high schools right now, and all of these folks in our audience are thinking about the context of their school, their readiness level, and what that's going to look like in their schools. So we'll stop there for English.
Very much, okay. So at this time, I'd like the board members to have an opportunity to discuss what's been presented, particularly on English, and ask any questions. We do have our principals here who could provide some, maybe some models or discussions of how they are providing opportunities for improvement with their particular populations of kids at their schools. So I'm opening up to questions of the board members.
And I would really encourage any of the four content areas because they're so, the strategies are very close.
Love to know some more about the academies. I've been able to visit and see, and I've had a son take them, but how are we seeing the academies benefit our freshmen?
Would you like, maybe?
Dr. Gilmore?
We're going to put Dr. Gilmore on.
I like your tie better.
Yeah, there you go.
Just kidding.
So that we understand Ms. Davis is a Westwood parent.
I'm glad you realize I have the better tie out here today, Dr. Oliver. The benefits of, you know, the academies, we could also refer to as our teams, our ninth grade teams. And like you were talking about earlier, the third bullet point is the why. You know, why are our kids in school? Why is the education that we are embarking on important and relevant in our lives? We really believe that once the students figure out their why, you know, that's gonna help out with our absenteeism because they're coming to school because they know why the learning is relevant. We have the English, the math, the science, and career exploration as a team at Westwood High School. And we've been doing this for about six years now. And each team is a little bit different. And so their response, the way that they attack Ds and Fs is gonna be a little bit different based on their student population. For a long time, you know, I was an apprentice to Richter Four and the PLC model. And we would have PLCs and teachers would get together. And it was usually around content areas. And they would talk about content. They would talk about their subject matter, what needs to be taught, common formative assessments. That was very prevalent across high schools. With these teams now, what we're starting to see is that they're talking about students because that's what they have in common. And so they're basing their instruction daily, weekly, monthly, whatever set of students that they have, based on the students that they have in their classroom. And so our ninth grade teachers, because it's really tough to find ninth grade teachers and keep them in the ninth grade, we sweeten the pot for them a little bit by having a two-hour planning period. And so every day for two hours, they're talking about their students and seeing what their needs are and how their curriculum, so if your biology teacher relates to math, how math relates to English, so that the students see the why that's going on. And so with that, the students are seeing the relevancy in their education. Yes, our teams still are seeing a problem, having a problem with attendance. Okay? It's not totally solved yet, but they're seeing better attendance rates. I don't have all the data here in front of me or memorized, but the students are coming to school and they're finding the joy in the learning that they're doing. Because we're doing problem-based learning, that is a big focus, and project-based learning. And showing that the education that they're doing is what is expected out in the community. You know, a big thing that we always keep on saying is that we want, the real world exists everywhere but a place called school. And we want to make sure that our school matches our business and our local economy because 82% of our students in Mesa Public Schools stays here. And so we want to make sure when we pass that baton off at graduation, that they're ready for college, career, and community. I could go on with many different types of interventions that they do, but, you know, they're doing enrichment time, they're doing interventions weekly, they're rotating their schedule, their four hours. It's not just English first hour, biology second hour, it's not just career exploration third hour. Weekly, the teachers are rotating their rosters to meet the needs of their students based on their assessments that they're doing. So a student might need two hours in math. And they might need to go over another standard and get them a higher so that they could raise that F to a D. You know, I see those numbers that are up there, and I'm really hopeful that by the end of the semester, they could get more students out of that F range because they encourage redos and retests so that they could master that standard within that four hours of time. So that's our snapshot. If you want to see the other tie-up here, where we could have him take it off, but Dr. Oliver. But did that answer your question, Ms. Davis?
Yes, thank you.
And Dr. Gilmore, I loved how you said that, you know, we determine in those academies, we determine the needs, tailor the instruction to meet the needs. What you're talking about is continuous improvement at Westwood High School.
Correct.
And that determination of providing opportunities for improvement for kids and surrounding them with caring adults in a team, those kids are less likely, it seems to me, to fall through the cracks.
That's correct. We're 64 acres, 3,400 students. We don't want to lose our students. We don't want them to hide. They're there with those teachers for four hours, and they're seeing relevancy in their education. They're doing meaningful education that's relevant to our local economy so that we can get them into an appropriate pathway, their 10th through 12th grade year, to fulfill our promise that they're diploma plus, and they're ready for college, career, and community. That's our goal.
Really quick, have you noticed a difference with the freshmen staying in the academies as far as being comfortable going to just the freshman building?
Yes, we're seeing that. And we're seeing that now we're in the third year where we've been wall-to-wall. And those teachers that have been there for three years now have three years of students coming in at lunch to get help because they have such a home foundation of those teachers, a home base with those teachers. But yeah, they feel like they have a home there in that 600 building.
Chris, you got me all excited with that Westwood tie-on.
Dr. Oliver, Mountain View.
You know, let me tell you, we have a lot of fun with the rivalries that we have. But Chris, who just spoke, is a mentor hero to me. He's a thought partner. He was the first dancer. He was going about leading change at Westwood before any of us. And I couldn't just watch him do that work alone. I had to leave Zoharist and go join the fold. And the group works relentlessly together. We're thought partners, we're friends. Dr. Mellerwine leads this work, and we are a united team. And we're constantly collaborating with each other, even outside of the school hours, sharing ideas. But the focus is on continuous improvement. Here's something, tell me if this isn't true. I learned this long ago. It doesn't matter if you're a school district or a multimillion-dollar business organization, a radio station, or any type of culture, there's only two ways to improve any organization. Tell me if this isn't true. One, you do the same old thing, and you try to do it better over and over and over again. And is there any organization that fits that more than public education? Dating back to the days of, I think it was Rulon Shepherd, Harvey Taylor, George Smith, Joe and I go back to Jim Zoharist in this building. I can still see Jim Zee up there. We've been going about doing the same old thing and trying to do it better for so long. The other approach is to discard that idea, and that is to embrace the idea that instead of doing the same old thing better, you do better things. And when people say that education is broken, I always argue that. It's not that it's broken, it's doing exactly what it was designed to do. Problem is, it was designed back in the industrial revolution of the 1890s when the aim was to put kids on assembly lines and factories where all the jobs were back then. And it's still the same model where a bell rings every hour, and a kid goes to English and thinks like a reader and writer at eight, math, and he thinks like a mathematician at nine, he goes to science, thinks like a scientist at 10, jewelry-making lunch at 1:00, social science. Only in school do we compartmentalize life. In the world, it's decompartmentalized. And so what we're doing is we're not tweaking the great American public education system. We're completely overhauling it. It's decades overdue. And when you do that, there's a sense of excitement, wonderment. People get excited. They don't want to leave and go to charter schools like the American Leadership Academy. They want to be part of something bigger. But the reality is this, and anybody that has a high school kid or has ever had one, many feel like, and I listen, I had 27 listening sessions before I came to Mountain View, and this is what I heard. My kid feels like school is the biggest waste of time. It's a drudgery. Getting him or her out of the door in the morning is next to impossible. Trying to do the same old thing with a system that is so antiquated is not the answer. So continuous improvement is trying new things. You've heard about the academies. We call them our freshman academic success teams. And we have drawn from Chris Gilmore. We've been over to that school so many times. We say one campus, two locations. Feel the same way about Mesa High and Red Mountain and Dobson and Skyline. Put me alongside those, and I'll get any arena. And you can mar my face with blood and sweat and dust. But here, tell me if this voice, and this is where I'll wrap it up, I was in a school improvement advisory council. Can you tell I'm passionate about this? I believe it. And if you've met with me for more than 30 seconds, you've heard this. Everywhere I go, when I get my big gulp at QT, they hear this sermon because I believe in it. I see what it's like when lives are transformed. It's not just how can we use intervention strategies that we've been using for decades and decades and decades to get kids through a system that should have been overhauled years ago. The answer is redesigning it. And this is what it does in the lives of kids. This came out of my school improvement advisory council meeting last week when they were asking, what data, as we go wall-to-wall with our freshman teams next year, what data do you have to show that it works? And while we shared some data that might be conventional data, I said, do we have any parents in here that have a kid on one of our teams? We had five parents. This is what two of them said. This is the transformation of a human life. And it's not just doing better in school and going from a D or an F to a B or a C. Listen to what this does in the lives of kids. And I have two here. I could produce 100 of these. Come out to Mountain View. Come to Westwood. Come to these schools. Let us walk you through so you can see it, hear it, and feel it. But listen to this. FAST Teams was very helpful to her. She's talking about her daughter, Stasia. This is a mom named April. She saw a tremendous change. Stasia didn't like school. It was an uphill climb to get her out the door. Now she's so much more eager. Her attitude towards school changed. She wasn't interested or engaged. She lost focus. Her grades were poor. School lacked purpose for her. I wanted to give the FAST Teams a shot. FAST Teams doesn't mean it's faster. It's an acronym, freshman academic success teams. She became more outspoken through this experience, more confident, more willing to ask questions, more willing to get work done and to get it done on time. She came out of her nutshell. This wasn't just with her. It was for many of her friends, other students. She became more social. She had her friends who were having a hard time. They became more involved. We need this for everyone. It was a game changer for Stasia. I have another one. I'm not gonna read to you, but I hear that every day. And when you do better things and you discard the idea that we have to do school the way we've always done it, I didn't leave Zoharist to go to high school to do the same old thing better. I came to completely reimagine it, turn it upside down on its head, and make it so it's so exhilarating that you don't have to have behavior contracts and attendance conferences with kids to get them there. They go there because school's so exciting because they're doing work that truly has a place in the world. I've told my teachers this in front of the governing board and everybody that'll listen in this listening audience. I've told them, if you're teaching something that you know clearly has no place in the world around you, that has no relevance whatsoever, stop teaching it. What are we doing if we're teaching something that has no purpose? That's where kids lack the motivation, is they feel like it's a waste of time. It's not gonna be a waste of time in the Mesa Public Schools. My parting shot, we've been to East LA, we've been to San Diego, we've been to Kettle Moraine outside of Milwaukee, we've been to North Kansas City just a couple of weeks ago, we've been to Charlottesville in a district called the Alamo Merrill County Schools. There are schools that are doing design shifts. What's gonna put Mesa Public Schools on the map, and it will, and it already is happening, is we're gonna do a parallel shift to where not only do we change the design, but teaching and learning is also elevated. It has to be a parallel shift. And that's what's gonna put us on the mark. Jen Echols is leading that. We had a meeting today. Change is happening. It's happening here. Buckle up. On the record, Mesa Public Schools will become the premier school in the entire United States of America. Mike Oliver, Mountain View High School, dropping the mic.
Why, thank you, Dr. Oliver. Certainly appreciate your approach, your passion, as Mark Perna would say, your passion. Would we, do we have any other questions?
Discussion among the board?
I have a question about the mastery of math for ninth grades. We talked about ninth grade as...
Can we put up the math discussion? Yeah, let's put up the math, if we've gone into math, thank you. The math discussion slide. There we go.
So quarter, and this might be for Dr. Strom, whoever wants to answer it. So, you know, I understand that makes sense, like we're looking at ninth grade because we're focused on graduation rates. When we look at the 10th grade and the 11th grade, and those are dropping from ninth grade. So is it credit recovery? Like, how do we come in for these students and help them especially? Because the ninth grade was at 70%, but then it drops in 10th and 11th grade. So is it credit recovery we're working on to help retain those students?
I can go ahead and answer a little of that.
It was just up there, yeah. Yeah, that, quarter, yeah, there we go. Yeah. So I was looking at, because then, you know, the focus was on ninth grade and just seeing that, you know, if we drop below that in 10th and 11th grade, and we're getting close to being on track for graduation. So can we talk about what that looks like?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can talk about that, Ms. Walden. So we look at ninth grade because we know that that's a pretty clear indicator where we're at. And just remember that the mastery is A, Bs, and Cs. So there are a number of Ds that are in there. And although Ds aren't what we shoot for, we do get diplomas with Ds. Sometime, one of the things that happens is when a kid does fail a class, then they kind of pile on top of each other. So now a kid's in credit recovery while he's also taking geometry. So what we, where we have really tried to attack this and kind of going upstream is what are some of the pieces and tools that we can put in place in grade seven and eight to help kids learn conceptually? So when they get to grade nine, they have a better chance of passing their Algebra I, so they don't get behind and they're not taking their geometry with their Algebra I. So what we've done is we brought AI and VR technology into those seventh and eighth grade classrooms. And we're also implementing deeper and personalized learning, professional development through a lot of what Dr. Oliver elaborated on, but through our teaching and learning department. But to answer your question, in credit recovery, yeah, we do have a very intentional credit recovery system which we took from the lead last year with Mr. Thomas at Mesa High, bringing a tier-two environment. So instead of kids going into a different environment or going to our credit recovery school, we've brought them in, we've tried to put them in a pathway of credit recovery and then get them back into the regular classroom. What I think is going to be the big success metric is when we install our pathway approach that is gonna put kids on a pathway from grades 10 to 12, where they'll walk out of high school with a diploma plus something else, a credentialing. Why that is going to help is with math, all the math, a lot of times kids don't see the relevancy and the purpose in the learning, so they lose the motivation. What we are gonna see, we're gonna be able to show them, and a lot of what EVIT does, is they show them where their math connects into a pathway to a career, a relevant career. And then we know through self-determination theory, seeing that mastery, seeing that purpose builds motivation with kids. So we're working on the psychology of students and getting them not only to have a sense of belonging, giving them some agency, but also seeing them a path to mastery. So right now, what we're doing is we're going upstream, increasing the education in our grade seven and eight and nine with technology. Our teaming model is gonna create that belonging and that connection when they're learning the math. And then when we get the pathways working, kids are gonna see the mastery in there. In the meantime, we do have a very intentional credit recovery program which gets the kids caught up. In addition to that, we do get pretty intentional when we come into our summer school, which we don't want kids to go to summer school to get to graduation. We know it's a little bit of a product of the learning losses occurred. So we're backfilling all that as we move further down. But we're not just attacking it with a credit recovery mentality. We're attacking this with how do we bring better instruction, relevancy into the classroom? How do kids see themselves learning the math in where they want to go one day? And also continuing to do better things with teachers, giving teachers really first-class professional development. So, I mean, in quick, that's what we're doing across all of this, but very specifically for math, that's what we're doing.
Thank you. That was really comprehensive. Thank you.
Thanks much. Any other, yes, Dr. Riley?
I just want to mention, if you look at, if you do all of the math ones, the previous one, I think, the previous graph for seven through 12, I think we have to recognize our teachers and students are obviously working very hard. We have fewer Fs, we have as many As, we have slightly more Bs, slightly more Cs. So I don't think we should leave this without saying, first quarter, good job. There's more to do. We don't want that many, you know, Fs and not many Ds, but it's looking good. So I just want to recognize that.
No comments? Can we, can we go to the science slide for discussion? One of the things that we noticed in, if, you know, and kids have to, you know, pass in biology and getting their credits in science is extremely important. And what I noticed in this report was that our kids are having limited access and/or time for lab and experiential science. And I looked at that, and I said, oh, wait a minute. I know that there are, shall we call them pockets of greatness? That there are some kids in our district that are having incredible That there are some kids in our district that are having incredible experiences. And, and the Red Mountain feeder pattern would be one. Keno Junior High's science and exploration programs by Nancy Parquinlin. I'm wondering, what are, what are we doing, and maybe some of the principals know this, in the other feeder patterns? What are some of the other ways in which we're trying to provide more opportunities for improvement, as Dr. Strom said? Are there other feeder patterns that are also taking a look at the sciences?
I'll jump in real quickly, and if the principals want to come up and have a conversation. In my superintendent report later this evening, I'll be showcasing some of the work happening in the Red Mountain feeder pattern. And that is a connection. It is a K-12 experience of design thinking through scientific thinking across schools. And that is very specific to our partnership with Honeywell. And we know that that has had great success. So there is a very intentional opportunity to replicate that in the Dobson feeder pattern. So there is a engineer who Honeywell hired to specifically expand the work that was happening in Red Mountain Ranch. So when we talk about, let's find where successes are and replicate them, we want to make sure that we give more teachers, more families, more students, those, what you will see later today is coming, well, it's already starting in the Dobson feeder pattern.
Okay, so that, that quality instruction, more of it, is going to lead to better student outcomes. Principal Buckley, are you, are you willing to talk about what this new feeder pattern might look like at your, in your school?
I have to be up here when everyone else came in the room.
We've got a choir ready to sing in a bit, and they're getting really ready.
Yeah, maybe they can just be behind me while I give you some information. So our launch into this is really just kind of in its first phases. But what, what I think is one of the greatest pieces that we have is Shane Bycott coming out and helping us understand what that's going to look like for us and bringing Honeywell into our space. They have been bringing our teachers to Honeywell to learn more about what it looks like to be an employee there, what kind of program we can offer, our programming we can offer our students. And it's coming from like all of our different CTE backgrounds. So one of my teachers that was very impacted in a really positive way was my automotive teacher. And, and so we have, we have students who may not have seen a future to go to college, going into a profession, a pathway post-graduation here pretty soon, that they might have generational ability to change the course of their family and their future family's lives. So that's really exciting. We also have, we have a, we started small with a freshman team this year. We have one. Our data looks a little bit different with our freshman team because we targeted students who had not signed up for any other, kind of like inclusivity. When, and by that I mean a sports team, our marching band, our performing arts. We have a very successful art program where we have a lot of students who receive art seals, or students who were enrolling in the AP Capstone program. So we had around 150 students that just were taking basic freshman courses. So we cohorted them, and we're learning as we go with this freshman class. But what they do have built into their day, they have all four core areas plus a CTE course for career exploration. And so that is helping them figure out these areas of interest, and many are in finding out that they do have interest in science. And now we do have pathways that are going to help support that for them as they go through the next three years with us. And then in that team, I'm sorry, out of all of our freshmen, since we're talking about some of the interventions, we have about 98 that are failing four or more classes. That's obviously a very big warning for us that we need to address. And we want to keep them in their classes. We're not going to take them out and put them in credit recovery. We do believe that the instruction happening in the classrooms, the experience happening in the classrooms are beneficial for them. That creates their sense of belonging with one another so that they get that over at Dobson. But we do have an incredible counseling team, Ramp Award Counseling Team, that has helped find, design, and implement instruction for 95 students who are failing those classes. So they're going to pull them out and give them intensified supports. And then they also all meet with our freshmen for freshman family meetings, and they identify pathways that they might be interested in, if they have college aspirations, even if they, you know, say, I kind of want to go to college, but I don't know if I have the grades to make it there. We just say, it's always a possibility. Let's continue to work for it. So they do create a lot of these pieces with our ninth grade team to help get them, our ninth graders, to help let them feel like they have a support system with them, as well as our families who come in with them. So it's, it's kind of exciting pieces, but that we're just kind of like in our very first phases of working with, with what Red Mountain has been doing. And, and obviously, when you see what Red Mountain has been doing for the past few years, it is, it's something that everybody would want to have on their campus. So the fact that we have that opportunity, we feel extremely fortunate to be supported by the district and, and through, and through Honeywell and the other companies that we're working with as well. So that's an opportunity that you afford to us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Maybe we should hear from Red Mountain. Let's, let's hear from Red Mountain. Here he comes. Mr. Tannenbaum.
Madam President, members of the board. It's a, it's an amazing place to be. I know I'm biased, but I think it's an amazing place to be in Mesa Public Schools and being at Red Mountain right now. To kind of piggyback a little bit on what Ms. Buckley was talking about, our feeder pattern program has been, it's been an awesome opportunity to see students connect through the love of learning and to find relevance in what they're learning, and to see them doing it at a, at a young age. It gives our, our seniors an opportunity, or our upperclassmen, an opportunity to provide a chance for leadership with some of our younger students coming up, seeing them there, having them go through the conversation of learning and design thinking and producing a product that they would be proud of, and then going through the struggles within those products together as, as they look to, to accomplish something and send, send an experiment to space. So it's, it's been an awesome process, and it takes, it takes a village, without a doubt. We have an amazing team, Mr. Bycott and the rest of our feeder pattern leadership that has helped and provided support, and the amount of support that we've received from the district when we've been setting up these large events and large meetings and coordinating with, with everybody that we need to, to, to send, to send an experiment to space. So it's been outstanding. Specifics, you know, specifics for us with, when in regards to academics, I think one of the biggest pieces, we all have lots of opportunities for design with our, with our freshmen and find ways to spiral back standards and address concerns. But I think for us is really to know that we're all looking at that data as well. It's a conversation that's here. As a team, we send that data out to all of our staff as an administrative team and as a leadership team. We discuss that data as well. We identify students. We find those students. We find ways to connect with those students. We reach out to our teams of teachers to know is there a better strategy to support individualized students and their specific needs? And then, and then, once you have that system to find ways to support them, then comes in the instructional approaches that might be, that might fit for that particular student. Can I answer any specifics on, on anything else with the feeder pattern program?
Are there any other questions for, for Mr. Tannenbaum of Red Mountain? No?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are fast approaching our, our time limit here, but is there any, we can go over a little bit. Ms. Sears, would you like to ask a question or a comment? Dr. O'Reilly, Ms. Walden? No? Okay. I know that what I'm, I'm hearing a major theme. Identifying students. Making sure we know their strengths and needs. Tailoring curriculum, instruction, and lots of it. Great instruction and lots of it. And we're going to see major successes. Providing opportunities for improvement is what I'm hearing from, from the principals. And we very much look forward to, this is an introductory, but we very much look forward to hearing the progress that continues, the continuous improvement. Because this is, this is, this is what we do as educators. This is the most important thing that we do. Meeting kids' needs, meeting them where they're at, and showing them where they can go. Showing them where they can go and making them ready to seize any opportunity that comes their way. And I, I want to congratulate all of you that it seems to me that we have a sense of continuous improvement. And I know that this board looks forward to hearing from you continually throughout the school year, to tell us what's working, what's not working, and how we can be a district of continuous improvement. Truly appreciate all of your reference, because what's happening on those graphs takes a lot of work. And I applaud your staffs. I applaud your, the professional educators, whether they be counselors, instructional coaches, classroom teachers. Thank them for us. We are deeply appreciative and know that we support your efforts.
And to Dr. O'Reilly, you know, thanking the teachers for their efforts in the quarter one. I'm looking at the end of this report, and we didn't get to, get to every slide, but from the 2021 to 2022 school year to the 2023 to 2024, the amount of ninth graders with Ds or Fs in quarter one improved by over 50%. It went from 1,500 to 700. That's really impressive.
Thank you. That type of data is the evidence that shows we're moving in the right direction. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your time. It was a long school day and then a long meeting, but we appreciate your input very much. Dr. Forliss, do you have anything else to add?
No, thank you very much for your time, and thank you to principals and teachers and all your staff. We appreciate all the work that you're doing.
Okay, at this time, we need to move to adjourn this meeting. And if we, when we do adjourn the meeting, I have one announcement. And so do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still moved.
Mrs. Sears has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Walden, second. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the study session. Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote? I do want to make mention that at 6:15, we will have a musical performance by the Franklin at Brimhall Choir on the direction of Gavin Rittenhouse. You won't want to miss that. So at 6:15, we'll hear from our, our elementary school students, and at 6:30, the regular meeting will begin. Hold tight. See you soon. Thank you.[1453.71]
I hear America's name is a poem written on the eve of the Civil War. It presents a vision of America and the harmonious community moving from the city to the country, or length to the sea. The poem envision America as a place where people do honest, painful, and satisfying work and celebrate that work in song. We appreciate the duty of our armed forces as they protect our country every day through the great history.
The pure joy of music. Thank you, thank you, boys and girls. Tremendous performance. We so thoroughly enjoyed it and we are so glad you are here at our meeting to start us off on the right foot. Just thank you very much. I know it took a lot for your parents to be here, for Mr. Rittenhouse to get you prepared, and for all the work that you did. Thank you. Your smiling faces just bring pure joy to our hearts. And I couldn't help but watch the parents watching their children and encouraging them to smile. And it was, it's quite a thing what music can do to a group of people. So, thank you so much for your performance. At this time, it is 6:30, and we will call the meeting to order, the regular meeting of the Mesa Public School Governing Board. And I do want to remind all citizens who wish to speak to a consent or action item that they must complete the sign-in sheet in the lobby prior to the board's consideration of the agenda item. But at this time, we always start off with the pledge and then the National Anthem. So, I will ask everyone to stand for the pledge. It will be led by our Associate Superintendent Monica Mesa. And then, of course, our National Anthem will be sung by the Franklin and Brimhall Choir under the direction of Gavin Rittenhouse. Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rittenhouse. I do believe you and Ms. Webster have provided us with the largest choir that has ever performed at a governing board meeting. So, you have set the record and you have done it in such a joyful way. Thank you so much. Okay, again, many thanks to the Franklin and Brimhall Choir. I love meetings when we get to start out with music and live music done by our students. At this time in our agenda, we have our Native American Heritage Month Land Acknowledgement. And I will turn it over to Dr. Forliss, who will introduce our guests.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have Mackenzie Cooper from the Westwood Native American Club President. Want to wave for us, Mackenzie? And we have Tyler Cornfield, the Dobson Native Club Vice President. And do we have other guests with you? Would you like to introduce yourself for us?
I'm Victor Maguag, I'm the Mountain View Native American Club President.
Excellent. I am so glad that you could make it because I know that you had a busy schedule today. So, thank you for being here. They are going to provide a land acknowledgement in honor of Native American Heritage Month. Please come forward to the podium.
It is vitally important to acknowledge that the land we live and work on is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape for millennia and continues to be spiritually connected to the Otham of the Salt River Pima Maracopa Indian Community who live here today. The SRPMIC is located in central Arizona nearest the city of Scottsdale, Arizona, within the metropolitan area of Phoenix, Arizona. The SRPMIC is a confederation of two unique cultures with their own languages, customs, cultures, religions, and histories. The Otham, known as the Pima, and the Pipash, known as the Maracopa. Both the Otham and the Pipash are oral history cultures. The SRPMIC and the Hela River Indian Community claim Aboriginal territory of lands exclusively used and occupied by the Akiomar Otham and Pipash, equaling 3,751,000 acres of south-central Arizona, as was adjudicated in 1970 by the U.S. Indian Claims Commission under Docket 228 acknowledging the colonization and illegal seeding of these lands. Recent anthropologic studies recognize the ancestral land use area of the Otham-Pipash and their ancestors to include a much more extensive area, including lands cast west from east along the present-day New Mexico border across Arizona to as far west as the Pacific coast, and from north to south from present-day Utah in the north, including the lands directly along the entire Colorado River and further south into Baja, California, and other parts of northern Mexico, northward of the Sierra Occidental where there are still Otham villages that are a part of the Tonah Otham Nation. This includes all areas inhabited by the Ho'okam Salado or Patayan cultures, as well as those ancestral to these groups.
The landscape is sacred and it reflects cultural values that are essential to our way of life and to the way we define ourselves. The oral history and the song culture of the people are specifically tied to tangible places like the mountains that surround our valleys, wait, like the mountains that surround our valleys, are associated with specific historic culture and religious values. Those places are tangible reminders to our people about our shared attitudes, goals, and practices that characterize who we are, where we belong, and how we relate to each other in the past continuing today and into the future.
Our oral histories use places to remind them what happened in a geographical region during a specific period of time. Our song culture uses the same processes to describe and direct sacred pilgrimages across the southwest. Our ancestors did not conceive of a time when human beings could destroy or own the landscape. They didn't think it was possible, or more so, our ancestors never foresaw a time when any human being would ever want to do that because the destruction would obliterate our links to our ancestors.
So, thank you, Governing Board President Hutchinson and other Governing Board members. And thank you for the invitation to allow us to breathe the land acknowledgement. And it's important that we always acknowledge and not just doing this during November, but always giving acknowledgement to the people who still call this land home. But you saw our student leaders. We wanted to center it around them to give the land acknowledgements, but we wanted to say thank you for the invitation to do so. Somorohehakwakwai. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to have representation from three of our high schools with our native clubs. I've been attending some of the native clubs at the junior high level as well, and it's been a very gratifying experience to see young people learning about their cultures, but also celebrating their cultures. At this time, we'll take a look at our Governing Board meeting procedures. And to do this, we'll have a video, a statement, and then, shall we say, a little bit of a teaser. So, can we please have the video on governing board procedures?
Welcome to the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board Meeting. We appreciate your interest in the district. The five elected Governing Board members serve without compensation and volunteer countless hours. The president and the clerk of the board are elected in January. Under state law, the Governing Board may only discuss and vote on matters that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Agendas are posted a minimum of 24 hours in advance on the Mesa Public Schools website and in the Curriculum Services Center. Copies of tonight's agenda are located in the lobby. The public may speak on any item of business on the agenda that requires the board to take action. If you wish to comment on an action item, please complete a request to address the board form before the item is discussed. The form is located in the lobby. Members of the public will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak. Once recognized by the Governing Board President, please state your name. We ask that all speakers show respect and courtesy to others. During the second regular meeting of each month, the agenda will include a call to the public, which is an opportunity to speak to the Governing Board about a school district matter that is not on the agenda. Please submit a request to address the board form to participate in the call to the public. If you would like the board to consider adding an item to a future agenda, you may submit your request in writing to the board at least five working days before that meeting. The superintendent or Governing Board President will consider your request. Thank you for your attendance and involvement in tonight's meeting.
This is an official Governing Board meeting. The board has important business to discuss that is essential to the operation of the district. Everyone is welcome to express ideas or concerns to the board in accordance with the agenda. The poster in the boardroom, located there on that wall, describes positive behaviors that are expected and behaviors that cannot be tolerated. It is the Governing Board President's responsibility to maintain proper order so the board can conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner. If you are disruptive or interfere with the conduct of the meeting, you will be asked to leave so that the board can conduct the business of the district. You may have noticed that there are some signs with QR codes. Starting at this meeting, a scorecard, also known as a survey, will be accessible through the QR codes in the boardroom and on the public notice posting for the board meeting and on live streaming video at the beginning and end. We're going to have a discussion towards the end of the meeting to introduce this to the public and begin collecting data from the public. So, hang on. Discussion item later on to tell you about our Democracy Innovation Project. At this time in our agenda, we would like to review the agenda. Dr. Riley, has any citizen requested to speak to a consent agenda item?
There is no request to speak at this point.
Thank you. Are there any board members who would like to pull a consent agenda item? Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues for following the courtesy of providing intent by noon of the day of the meeting so that we know if an agenda item will be pulled. Thank you so much for your courtesy. At this time, we will then review the Governing Board calendar. Lot of things happening.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members of the board are going to walk us through the month of November, what is left, and into December. So, November 22nd to the 24th is our Thanksgiving break. On November 22nd, schools will be closed and we will have limited district services available. So, if you need to make an appointment with somebody, please call ahead to make sure that that district office is indeed open. November 23rd and 24th, schools and district offices are closed in observance of Thanksgiving. On November 28th, we will be back in this Governing Board room for a study session that begins at 5 o'clock. Some of you were here for tonight's study session where we were looking at student grades, specifically our high school students' grades for the first quarter as we look towards our goal to increase our graduation rate. So, you will see on November 28th, we will have a study session focusing on absenteeism, and that will be across grade levels and what that looks like in Mesa Public Schools, and some of the strategies that we're working on to decrease chronic absenteeism because we know how important it is to be on time and ready to learn every single day. 6 o'clock will be a short dinner, then at 6:30 will be our Governing Board meeting. On December 12th, we will have an executive session, and that will be focused on my mid-year review. 6 o'clock will be dinner. 6:30, we will start our regularly scheduled Governing Board meeting. On December 20th, at 7:00 PM, we have the East Valley Academy Graduation at Dobson High School. That is our alternative high school that is designed to help students graduate, recover credits, and to be able to graduate. So, we always do two graduations with Eva. So, if you are interested in attending and representing the Governing Board, on December 20th, there's a signup sheet in the agenda. We would love to have you there. December 22nd begins our winter break that will extend through January 5th, and our schools and district offices will be closed. Again, that's December 22nd to January 5th. And then, January 8th, our teachers will be coming back to school for Professional Learning Day. Our classified staff, that's an optional day for them if they choose to participate in professional learning, but there will be no school for students on January 8th. So, all you kids out there, your winter break goes all the way through January 8th. And that concludes the review of the calendar.
Thanks very much, Dr. Forliss. Just a reminder too, that if we have winter break from the 22nd to January 5th, the regularly scheduled board meeting would not be taking place. So, please do not show up on the 26th for a board meeting because it's Box Day in Canada, and we won't be here. We'll be celebrating with our families, and as I'm sure you will be enjoying your holidays with your families. At this time in our agenda, we have the updates and recognitions, and I'm going to turn it again over to Dr. Forliss, who will give us her update. And wow, have we got a lot to talk about.
Oh, there's a lot to talk about, so I'm glad there's so many of you here to see the great things happening in Mesa Public Schools. We'll get started, Chad. Thank you so very much. We know that we have great work to do, and the work is because we are focused on the outcomes of our students. And so, you'll see in this graphic, in the center is the portrait of the Mesa Public School graduate. That is our student-centered approach to the work that we do, and we wrap five strategic goals around that portrait of a graduate so that we can deliver upon our outcomes to students. All of that was designed because of this very aspirational promise that we make to our community. And the Mesa Public School Promise, it was great that we had some opportunity to hear about this in action during our study session. We had high school principals giving examples of how this promise comes to life every day in their schools, knowing students by name, serving them by strength and need so that they graduate ready for college, career, and community. Like to start off with a focus on our students and literacy. I was delighted to join Krista Adams, the Next Education Workforce Leadership Coach, and Fiorella Acebido, who was the English Language Acquisition Department Specialist in celebration of Jump Starts Read for the Record by reading the book With Lots of Love by Jenny Torres. Jump Starts Read for the Record is the world's largest shared reading experience and celebrates and supports children's early language development. So, you will see, we were here with kindergarteners, and it was a fantastic experience. We got some excitement today from the Brimhall Choir focusing on Veterans Day songs. So, I'd like to celebrate and share. Our schools across the district celebrated and honored those who served our country with various Veterans Day activities. La Cendice Veterans Day Ceremony included thank you cards created by students for veterans. Many schools invited veterans and families to attend flag raising and patriotic assemblies. And at Porter Elementary, they hosted a breakfast for veterans where Mesa High's Junior ROTC program conducted a flag ceremony. And while we're talking about JROTC, I want to let you know that starting at the next board meeting, high school junior ROTC will present the colors and will continue this very important ceremony at the second board meeting each month of our school year. We extend our deepest gratitude to our veterans for their unwavering commitment to preserving our freedom. Their courage and dedication serve as an inspiration for our students, reminding them of the values that define our nation. We thank you, veterans, for your selfless devotion to duty and to the enduring legacy you leave for generations to come. you leave for generations to come. Last month, students at Mr. Terry Graves's art class at Red Mountain High School were given the unique opportunity to exhibit and sell their artwork at the prestigious Fost Gallery in Scottsdale. This gallery is a notable presence in Scottsdale's thriving art community, acclaimed for its emphasis on contemporary and Native American art. Twenty-eight students participated, showcasing 47 art pieces. The event was a huge success with a list of attendees that included famous artists, art dealers, art school professors, and proud parents. This amazing opportunity provided a platform for our young artists to show their talent, gain exposure, and connect with the art community. We talk about providing opportunities for college, career, and community. Great example of this exhibition. Speaking of the arts, the Shepherd Junior High On Stage Show Choir was selected to perform at the Arizona Teacher of the Year Awards Ceremony on September-October 14th during our fall break. These talented 12- and 13-year-olds were honored to be a part of this prestigious event. You may remember that we previously celebrated our very own Caroline Chung Whip, an exceptional English Language Arts and Social Studies teacher at Mesa Academy of Advanced Studies during a past Governing Board meeting. She was recognized at the event as a 2024 Arizona Teacher of the Year semifinalist. We're going to move over to Eisenhower Elementary Center for Innovation, was one of 22 schools from across the country chosen to receive a Project Learning Garden in collaboration with Captain Planet Foundation at Cox Enterprises. This opportunity allows students to plant and care for a garden. They learned about how to care for different types of plants and got to taste what they grew. That was probably the best part. Mayor John Giles, district leadership, representatives from Captain Planet Foundation and Cox Enterprises, along with families from Eisenhower, attended the garden dedication ceremony. We're looking forward to all that's to grow. November is National Native American Heritage Month. Our Native American education program is celebrating this month through a variety of events across our district that highlight the rich Native American culture. Some of these events have included Elementary Family Cultural Night with Miss Indian Arizona, Miss Salt River, and Miss Arizona State University. Westwood High School kicked off the month with a first Friday event, and last week, Mountain View High School hosted Native American Heritage Night. This week, our Native American education program is celebrating Cultural Week across the district and will host events or activities at several of our schools featuring Native American dances, history, and culture. During our study session, we talked about great opportunities for relevance and understanding science. So I'm going to share just a little bit about that program, and then we're going to listen to our kids in action. Mesa Public Schools partnered with Honeywell to send a student project to space through what is known as the Student Space Flight Experiments Program. And in education, we always use acronyms, so it's SSEP is what we call it. Over 2,000 students from Red Mountain High School, Jefferson Elementary, La Cendice Elementary, Red Mountain Ranch Elementary, Mendoza Elementary, and Zaharis Elementary have worked in teams to develop an experiment and compete for a spot to send their project to space. At the beginning of the month, students showcased their experiments at Red Mountain High School at the Red Mountain High School, what is called the STEM-I conference and showcase. Three teams were chosen as finalists. Their experiments will be sent to the SSEP for review, with one chosen to be sent on a SpaceX Falcon rocket this upcoming summer. So sending something into space and getting it to the International Space Station is pretty amazing. I want to thank Honeywell for their partnership to provide such an amazing opportunity to students and to our staff. But I think you've had enough for me talking about it. I would love for you to hear from our kids in a quick video, and you will see the skills and attitudes in the portrait of a graduate coming to life throughout this video. Chad, please show the video.
Can you fight bad bacteria in space?
This event is something we've been looking forward to since before the beginning of the school year. We've been looking forward to this event. Our students have worked on questions that they can test out in the International Space Station. And so our students have shown up to show off all their hard work, explain their logic behind their questions and their reasoning, and then have the chance to have their project go to space.
My teacher made us into groups, and then we would work together to find questions and research problems in space.
The elementary students came up with their question. We took those questions and made them into an actual experiment, made them into something that was testable that we could send to space. And then we worked with the English students, and they did our project proposal with us, and then we just presented all together as a group.
And then the other thing they're presenting is their patch that they've designed, which is the mission patch, which is symbolic of the work that's going together, the schools that are participating in this project together, and all the pieces, kind of really putting meaning behind what they've done and what they're going to continue doing.
They've been talking through WebExs, they've been talking through emails. They came together today for their presentation. Honeywell got to be here to watch it and give feedback. That was probably the neatest thing I saw today, was the amount of feedback that our students were accepting and utilizing from their industry partners.
We are here to encourage the students, all the way from elementary to high school, to think big, to think about the future, to think about what we can do in space. And more importantly, we want them to be excited about STEM, excited about what STEM gives to them about their future, and then they want to make the right choices. Selfishly, we want them to kick me out, my gray hair out, and these are the kids who are going to shape the future. So we want to invest in them.
STEM is a big part of the world right now, and just getting kids in STEM, it puts them on a path for learning. I feel amazing because one of the things I want to do when I grow up, I want to go to space. So this was a really exciting project for me.
So that leads to our final question of how does microgravity affect microbial ecosystems in soil?
I think my favorite part of this project was seeing the community get together and actually put on such a huge event that we have here today.
At the end of the day, we had about 1,000 students work on the experiment, and then another thousand work on the patch. So one experiment, one opportunity, how many students got that chance to be a part of it?
The questions that our students have developed have blown us away, better than anything we could have come up with or guided them to. And really, all we had to do was open up the opportunity for them to do it.
So much to celebrate in that three-minute video. This is what Mesa Public Schools is all about, is creating more opportunities for more kids more of the time. And normally, we end on a video, but I have more to talk to you about because so many great things have been happening. I want to focus on our teachers for just a bit. So Chad, we're going to go back to the slides.
Can you fight?
And as Chad gets the slide back up, I want to congratulate 46 district winners in the Palo Verde Fiesta Bowl Charities Wishers Teachers Draft Day, presented by Salt River Project. Each teacher will receive a $2,000 grant for a school or classroom project. Our classrooms will benefit from a variety of projects and equipment upgrades that include STEAM equipment, adding art into STEM, flexible seating for classrooms, art supplies, physical education equipment, and gym dividers that allow for dedicated spaces for individual classes. So again, huge celebration to our teachers and their successful securing of grant dollars. And then we talk about healthiest schools. Fifty-seven of our elementary schools were recognized as America's healthiest schools for the 2022-23 school year. The recognition was awarded by Alliance for a Healthier Generation, known as Healthier Generation, a leading children's health organization. They honor schools' dedication to supporting the health and the well-being of students, staff, and their families. Our schools were recognized in up to nine topics, and I'll just give you a quick overview of them. Bolstering physical education and physical activity, supporting health services, improving nutrition and food access, increasing family and community engagement, strengthening social, emotional health and learning, and cultivating a staff's well-being. A huge congratulations to those 57 elementary schools who earned this wonderful honor. And parents, I don't want to leave you out. Each quarter, we meet with the Mesa Parent Council to discuss timely topics. So last week, Dr. Matt Strom discussed school letter grades, how they're calculated and what they mean, and Renee Parker discussed the importance of community partnerships. Included in the meetings is open dialogue, which is always my favorite part of the meeting. This month, we had wonderful discussions on communication and security. I value the time these representatives take to meet with me and the interest and care that they have for their kids and their schools. So parents, if you're interested, speak to your principal. Principals, just submit the name of an interested parent to serve on Mesa Parent Council. We have four meetings, we have one meeting a quarter. Great information, and boy, it's some of my best learning throughout the quarter. So I just want to say thank you to our parents who are so dedicated. I'd like to provide an update this evening on the final results of our bond and override continuation. The override continuation, which supports essential school district salaries and educational programs, has received support and approval from our community. We express our gratitude to the voters who recognize the importance of sustaining our district's commitment to quality education and its educators. However, the bond election, which sought funding for critical improvements for safety upgrades in our schools and continued access to current technology, did not achieve the necessary approval from our community. The success of the override continuation is a testament to the dedication of our community to maintaining competitive salaries for our educators and preserving the diverse educational programs that enrich our students' experiences. These funds play a crucial role in ensuring that our district can attract and retain talented teachers and staff who are essential to our students' success. Despite the setback of the bond election, we remain committed to educating our students. The narrow rejection of the bond measure poses challenges for our district, as many critical initiatives to improve our educational infrastructure will be altered. I want to share my appreciation for the support of our staff in Mesa Public Schools. And speaking of district letter grades, you might be wondering, so you might know your school's letter grade, but let's talk about this as a district. I'm proud to announce that our district's performance in the latest A-through-F letter grade report from the Arizona Department of Education has an overall district grade of letter B. We continue to deliver on our promise that every student Mesa Public Schools is known by name, served by strength and need, and graduates ready for college, career, and community. That letter grade of a B is an average of all of our grades put together, so let me give you some highlights. Highlights of our letter grades include an overall B grade for our district, 27 schools achieved an A grade, which is 12 more than the previous year, 26 schools earned a B, 27 of our schools moved up at least one letter grade, and six of those moved up two letter grades. Thirty-nine schools maintained their letter grade from the previous year. And also, just to let you know, you might be wondering, how do our schools compare across the state? Mesa Public Schools has four schools in the top 5%, eight schools in the top 10%, and 20 schools in the top 20% of Arizona. We are dedicated to improving the outcomes of students throughout our districts every single day. And with that, that concludes my very long report of great things happening in Mesa Public Schools. So you'll see this infographic in lots of places. Love to be able to talk more about it, and if you are interested, have a conversation with your principal if you'd like to know about your individual school. And with that, I conclude my update.
Thank you, Dr. Forliss. That was really comprehensive, but very informative. I mean, we have great things happening every day in Mesa Public Schools. And now is the time of the meeting to recognize some great individuals from Westwood, various schools around the district, as well as Mountain View. So without further ado, I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me in front of the dais as we recognize students and teachers who have done outstanding things.
He's over in the corner, and he is our photographer, so he's going to turn into the boss pretty soon, organizing people to get great pictures. Because as you know, if there's not a picture, it hasn't happened. So we want to memorialize and celebrate all this this evening. Celebrating success is just one of the ways that we ignite a culture of learning and well-being in Mesa Public Schools. We're committed to recognizing students, teachers, staff, and administrators for all of their achievements. Tonight, it is our honor to celebrate four of our district's outstanding physical education teachers for their achievements. We will also be highlighting student athletes from one of our girls' flag football teams and Unified Badminton Teams who have won Arizona Interscholastic Association Team Championships at the state level for their sport. So again, lots to celebrate. And you're saying, so let's get this show on the road. All right, we're getting to going. So we're going to begin tonight by recognizing four physical education teachers who were recently honored by the Arizona Health and Physical Education, an organization that promotes and supports school physical education and community-based physical activity programs that foster healthy and active youth. There's been a theme tonight about all these great things, from gardens to healthy schools, and now it's all about the people that are winning these awards. So first, we will recognize Larissa Talamontis. Will you please join me at the podium? So hello, so happy to see you. Ms. Talamontis is an outstanding physical education teacher at Edison Elementary. So tonight, she is being recognized for receiving, and of course, we need acronyms, right? The AZHPE. Got it? Arizona HPE Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. So please join me in congratulating Larissa for being named a 2023 AZHPE Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. Give a big round of applause. I will have you recognize our board members. I want to recognize you. We'll get a quick picture, and then when we have all four of you, we'll do a group picture. Okay? Good? Okay. Okay, next, come on up, Rachel Shea. Please come on up to the podium. Rachel is one of our incredible adapted physical education teachers. She serves the students at Adams, Crisman, and Redbird Elementary, but we're still going, Summit Academy, Carson Junior High, and Dobson High School. Tonight, she is being recognized for receiving the AZHPE Dr. Lee Burkett Adapted Physical Education Honor Award. This annual award is in recognition of an adapted physical education teacher which exemplifies the professional characteristics personified by Dr. Lee Ann Burkett, a groundbreaker in adapted physical education in Arizona. The following attributes must be overly, not just displayed, overly displayed by the professional receiving this award. Adapted physical education in Arizona for more than 10 years, established volunteer work within the community, donation of time and energy outside of the responsibility of duty to further the field of adapted physical education. So please join me in congratulating Rachel for receiving the 2023 Arizona HPE Dr. Lee Burkett Adapted Physical Education Honor Award. How'd I do, Deb? Is that good? All righty, we're still going. Now we will recognize Dr. Jennifer Houston. Will you please join me at the podium? Dr. Houston is one of our amazing adapted physical education teachers. She works with students at Robson, Holmes, Lincoln, and Longfellow Elementary, Shepherd Junior High, and Mountain View High Schools. Tonight, she is being recognized for receiving the Arizona HPE Adapted Physical Education Teacher of the Year. So please join me in congratulating Dr. Houston for being named the 2023 AZHPE So please join me in congratulating Dr. Houston for being named the 2023 AZHPE Adapted Physical Education Teacher of the Year. You would have thought I had that number on my head, right? That's a bunch. Great, you got that. And Dr. Houston, we know that you have a few words to share, so now that you've shook hands, I'm going to recognize who wasn't able to be here, and then if you want to close, we'll get a picture, and if you want to close us out with your remarks, fantastic. We do have one more recognition from the Arizona HPE who could not be with us tonight. Brandon Jacobson, a physical education teacher who travels to Webster, Lowell, and Hughes, was named Rookie of the Year. So congratulations to these wonderful physical education teachers. We're so grateful. We'd like to hear from you, and then we will get a group picture together. Is that good, Dr. Houston? Come on over. Are you sure?
Absolutely.
I was just going to say, our online viewers may not get to hear your greatness.
All right, so, good evening, and thank you for having us here. When I was asked if I wanted to speak tonight, my first reaction was, uh, no. But for those of you who know me, you know I always want to stay, speak in front of people. So I started thinking about it, and I thought it would be a great opportunity to tell you all what adapted physical education is, because a lot of people have no clue. Or if you think of what physical education is, it's like, oh, yeah, you just roll the ball out and let them play, right? So most people, when they ask me, or I tell them I'm a physical educator, they, oh, you get to play all day. And my response is, hey, don't hate the player, hate the game. And I knew exactly what I was getting into when I became an adapted PE teacher, because yes, I do get to play for a good portion of my day. We do a lot of other things, too. But just so you know, adapted physical education, or APE, we are known as APES. We, it's specifically designed instruction in physical education that has been adapted or modified so that is, it is as appropriate for the person with a disability as it is for a person without a disability. And for those of you who also don't know, that federal law mandates that physical education were the only specials that is mandated to be provided to students with disabilities and defines physical education as a development of motor skills, including aquatics, dance, individual group games, and now we even have AIA sports through Special Olympics. We do a lot of stuff. We provide AP instruction to, and services to students with disabilities who qualify for special education under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act, otherwise known as IDEA. And in short, our job is to ensure that our students with disabilities, no matter their level of ability, have the opportunity to not only attend and participate in the general physical education classes with their school HPEs, but we want them to experience success in all the activities offered. A couple people that I do need to thank, Rachel Shea, who's also honored tonight. She's helped me over the last few years, once I started working here at Mesa Public Schools. She's been my colleague, my department chair, she answers my questions every single day, and we've been really good friends. And of course, she was honored with the Lee Burkett Honor Award tonight, so thank you so much, Rachel. But I also need to thank Deb Pangrazie, who was here, because Deb Pangrazie, not only being a great friend of mine, who always listens to my events and my complaints and everything else, she is a huge advocate for physical education, for our department, for us as adapted physical educators, and she is constantly collaborating with us. So we, our, us as APE get to go play with the PE teachers during PD days, see all those acronyms I use, I'm getting them. So thank you so much, Deb, we appreciate it. So that's all I have.
And in my speed reading, I did not mention that Rachel also serves the children at Roosevelt Elementary, so I want to make sure that we get that on the record, because that's a big piece of her heart, is at Roosevelt Elementary. Thank you. All righty, here we go. Now we're going to move on to our kids. So next, we're going to celebrate our newest high school athletic team champions. We have two high schools to recognize this evening. So first, we are going to recognize the Mountain View High School Girls' Flag Football Team, who made history this month by winning the inaugural AIA Division 6A State Championship. This season was a first year for flag football that was sanctioned as an official AIA sport. The Toros defeated Mountain Ridge 10 to 7 in the championship game. And I have to tell you, if you follow Mesa Public Schools' social media, your video on Mesa Public Schools has gotten more hits and more likes and more everything, so you're our secret sauce to social media, ladies. Thank you. Students, as I announce your names, will you please take your place center stage? We'll have you come up as a group, and then you'll be, we'll get some pictures, and we'll recognize, our governing board would like to shake each of your hands, because you're so proud of the work that you've done. So come on up, Alexis Archibald. Brynlee Benjamin. Roxy Bianco. I know how busy all you kids are, and it's hard to be in multiple places at once. Sadie Christensen, come on up. We have a pattern. Come on, Tessa Christensen. Kendall Cox. Kendall Cox. Annabelle Curtis. Tatum Eaton. Sadie Gardner. Olivia Handley. Ashlyn Keeler. Jersey Lovett. Isabel Luna. Tiara Metcalf. Sarah Pobliago. Sky Reedhead. Brooklyn Schindeldecker. Larissa Skinner. Josie Smith. Kylan Sylvester. Kylie Thurman. Journey Turgerson Rundio. Jenny Wilson. We're getting there, girls. Meg Woods. Ashley Yasi. Kaylee Yasi. And I'd also like to recognize the Mountain View High Team Coach at this time, come on up, Jesus Arzaga, the Head Flag Football Coach. Leo Christensen, and Grace Cyrus, and Lauren Salisbury are Assistant Flag Football Coaches, if they're here. Okay, great. Now, Coach Arzaga is going to be talking about flag football, but I also want to let our governing board know that during our study session, we talked about the fast teams at Mountain View, also a strong leader, and the fast teams at Mountain View. So coached during the day and after school. There you go. Would you would like to say a few words, Coach?
Sure.
Come on over.
I'll keep it really quick. First off, MPS, Board Members, Superintendents, thank you very much for having us, appreciate it, but big thank you. Tommy Eubanks, our District Athletic Director, Mike Oliver, our Principal at Mountain View High School, Joe Goodman, our Athletic Director at Mountain View, my assistants, my baseball coaching staff, and my wife. Without any of those people, this would not be possible. And lastly, our 6A Girls' Flag Football State Champions as well. So I just want to say thank you to everybody where these girls are starting to realize that this isn't over yet with all the recognition and stuff like that. So we just, we're very appreciative of Mesa Public Schools for allowing us to be a part of this sanctioned sport, and I love you, girls. Appreciate you all.
And the man was a bad time.
All right, all, they're all down, here we go. We have a little something for you right over here. And if you are here to celebrate these students, you are probably taking a picture so we know who you are, but if you'd like to stand up, we would like to recognize you for your support of all of these amazing kids and their coaches. And finally, we will recognize two members of the Westwood Unified Badminton Team for winning the 2023 AIA Unified Double State Championship Silver Division. Wow, is that a title. Special Olympics Arizona and the AIA Partner to provide unified sports through a competitive interscholastic model. Through unified sports, student athletes are able to represent their school, community, and regular season and postseason interscholastic league play against other high school unified sports teams. The goal is to build confidence through success and experience of being part of a team. So students, as I announce your names, please take your place right in center stage. We've kind of been doing this. Here we go. Elian Duarte Cervantes is our athlete. Emma Layton is the partner in the play. What a fantastic duo up there. And let me also recognize the Westwood High Coaches at this time, Beg Bauman and Heidi Dorn. Are you here? Come on. All right, we'll come up and do a quick picture. And this celebration would not be complete if we did not have our students speak for just a bit. They would like to address the board and the audience that is with us here.
My name is Elian. I'm a unified athlete. And when I won the badminton state championship, my, my dad was there and took some photos. He was super happy that we won the championship. I felt happy. I did good. Lots of hitting. I won really good points. Emma is a good partner. She communicates with me about everything in the game. I'm a state champion. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm a little shorter. Hi, my name is Emma Layton, and I am a partner in the unified program at Westwood High School. I, wow, I'm so grateful to have had Elian as my athlete partner in badminton. He's an amazing friend and a very, very hard worker.
Put your tongue on top of your mouth.
It was so incredible to make it so far, even when it was hard and it wasn't super easy, but we always worked together and talked to each other. Elian was always able to help me calm down and stay focused when I got stressed out in the games, and he's such a good person to just be there to work with. I'm grateful that even though sometimes it was hard, he was always pushing through and being a good example of hard work. He's a good sport and, and has been wonderful to work with. I'm so proud of us for making it to state. I'm grateful for our coaches who understood that we worked well together. I'm so happy Elian is a good learner and listener, and I'm proud to be a state champion with Elian. Thank you.
Mr. Hacker, have you been able to get a picture of the dynamic duo together? And would you like a picture with your families together as well? Let's do that. You're having pictures. And a Mesa Parent Council Dad, all at the same time. Look at that. A big round of applause for these students and their families. We thank you all very much for, for joining us this evening for these very special recognitions. You are welcome to stay as we jump into the business portion of our meeting, but if you want to go celebrate elsewhere, we, we understand. Enjoy the rest of your evenings, or feel free to stay with us. This is what Mesa Public Schools is all about. Thank you. Thank you.
No, I took it from, it was next one round. I just put it over here, so.
Great things happening every day in Mesa Public Schools. Um, you know, I think yesterday was kindness day, but we might have seen the best example of kindness today. Elian and Emma, unbelievable partners and state champions, believing in each other. And the girls, pioneers, the first flag football state champions. Um, terrific. Um, again, as Dr. Strom said, opportunities. And I'm so, I'm so thankful that those folks had the opportunities to compete and to compete as a team. At this time in our agenda, we take a look at the personnel requests. And at, at this time, I would like a, um, motion to approve personnel requests.
So moved.
Ms. Sears has moved. Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Davis has seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel requests. Are there, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote? With a vote of five zero, the board has approved the personnel requests. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda item. All items listed are considered as a group and will be approved with one motion. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Sears has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis has seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Seeing that we cannot have discussion, Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote? With a vote of five zero, we have approved the consent agenda. Um, it is customary at the end of the approval of the consent agenda for, um, superintendency or board members to make a comment on what we have just approved. Does anyone want to do that? One, one of the things that I would like to make mention of, and it just so happened I was at a meeting of Reed on Mesa today. Um, one of the things that we did approve in the consent agenda was an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Mesa. And that is allowing us to partner with the city of Mesa in, um, a volunteer effort to advance literacy in our community. Um, AARP has an experience corps for ages of adults that are over 50, and they will serve as tutors in Mesa Public Schools. Um, in, in, um, meetings today, I learned that 45 seniors have gone through the training and will be working at some selected elementary schools. And they are asking for more volunteers. Um, Thursday, the 30th of November, from 1:00 to 2:30 at the main library, they'll be taking, um, volunteers at that time, Thursday, 11:30, 1:00 to 2:30. And Monday, on the December 4th, from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM at the Dobson Ranch Library. This is a magnificent opportunity for seniors who want to give back to our community and really help our students achieve proficiency in reading. And besides, you just develop wonderful relationships with kids and their schools. Um, it's a very rewarding experience. I've had, um, friends of mine that have done it in the Phoenix Elementary School Districts, and they've been doing it for years because they give, but they get so much back from their relationship with the kids that they tutor and the schools that they serve. At this time, we would have our proclamations, and we happen to have two proclamations. And so I would, um, entertain a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing November 13th through 17th, 2023 as American Education Week.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Sears.
And seconded.
And seconded by Dr. O'Reilly. It's been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation recognizing American Education Week. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there is no discussion, Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote? With a vote of five yays and zero nays, we have unanimously approved the proclamation for American Education Week. And at this time, I'd like Dr. O'Reilly to read the proclamation.
Whereas Mesa Public Schools provides tools to help young people maintain America's freedom and equality, our schools equip students with practical and intellectual abilities for their future. District staff members serve our community with care and professionalism. Parents and the public are an integral part of the district. And Mesa Public Schools unites students, families, school employees, volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in the common enterprise. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim American Education Week in Mesa Public Schools, November 13th through 17th, 2023. With a kickoff day on November 13th, Parents Day on the 14th, Education Support Personnel Day on November 15th, Educator for a Day on November 16th, and Substitute Teacher Day on November 17th. Please join us in observing this week by acknowledging the important role we share in helping children grow, prosper, and achieve in the 21st century. And we sign this the 14th day of November, 2023.
Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. The second item on our agenda is the proclamation and recognition of Ruby Bridges Day. Is there a motion to approve a proclamation recognizing November 14th, 2023, which is today, as Ruby Bridges Day?
So moved.
Mrs. Sears has moved. Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Davis has seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote? With a unanimous vote of five yays, zero nay, we have approved the proclamation and recognition of Ruby Bridges Day. And Dr. O'Reilly, would you please do us the honor of reading the proclamation?
I'd be happy to. Ruby Bridges Day, whereas Ruby Nell Bridges became a symbol of the Civil Rights Movement at age six, when she was the youngest of a group of African-American students designated to integrate schools in the American South. And whereas on November 14th, 1960, Ruby Bridges went to William France Elementary School as the only African-American student to attend the school. And whereas the Barbara Henry, whereas Barbara Henry was the only teacher that would teach Ruby Bridges. And the, for the entire year, Ms. Henry taught Ruby Bridges alone in the classroom. And whereas despite the threats and protests, the Bridges family was determined to keep sending Ruby to school. She didn't miss a school, a single day of class that year. And whereas in 1999, Ruby Bridges established the Ruby Bridges Foundation to promote, quote, "The values of tolerance, respect, and appreciation of all differences." And whereas every year on or about November 14th, students, staff, and teachers across the country honor Ms. Bridges and the courage she carried to walk through the doors of William France Elementary School in 1960 by welcoming students with words of love and encouragement to start the day. And whereas Mesa Public Schools supports an educational environment that emphasizes both in, being inclusive, ethical, and resilient, the governing board and superintendent of Mesa Public Schools do hereby proclaim November 14th as Ruby Bridges Day. We encourage the community to join our students and staff in observing this special day by reflecting on the importance of finding common ground, seeking to understand the ideas of others, and seeing strengths in differences. Sign this 14th day of November, 2023.
Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. The next agenda item are policies. And we have a first reading of a policy tonight. It is policy GCPA Reduction in Force Certificated Teachers. And I understand that though he is not in person, Mr. Wing is in the building virtually. So, um, um, Mr. Justin Wing will be presenting the recommendations from the MPS team on the proposed reduction in force policy. Mr. Wing, are you there?
Good evening. I am here.
And there he is.
Terrific. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Wing. Um, would you please, um, proceed?
Madam President, Governing Board, Superintendency, Audience, uh, today we're going to go over our first reading of our reduction of force policy. Reduction of force, otherwise known as RIF, uh, had been a topic in meet and confer, uh, last school year. Uh, because of other priorities and issues, uh, that had to be, uh, looked upon, we decided to kind of push it off until the summer and have a design team work on our, review our policy, review our regulation, and ultimately come up with a recommendation to take to the governing board. Uh, there hasn't been, uh, there's not substantial changes to our current policy, but I'll go over briefly, uh, some of the items we are recommending. Uh, we did define a teacher, um, and teacher means more than just the classroom teacher. There are other certified personnel as well. So we wanted to, to make sure that we pointed that out. In the past policy, superintendent or designated, uh, including HR, had an opportunity to, uh, pull, uh, pull from the master RIF list if, if and whenever there needed to be one. Uh, but there was really any criteria, objective criteria, uh, that led to it. So the committee, design team recommended that we remove that because it was a little more arbitrary. Uh, and we wanted to make sure we, uh, limited our liability, uh, from a personnel matter. Uh, likewise, the governing board had an opportunity to accept, revise, or reject the master RIF list if and whenever we needed to, to process it. Same rationale with the superintendent and HR. We're recommending that we remove the revise or deny it. So far, so good?
We lost you for a second, Justin, but you're back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're back.
Did you, okay, my apologies. Uh, so we, the committee did, the design team, excuse me, did recommend that the superintendent, HR, and the governing board can't revise or pull from the list or put on a list. We would stick to what, uh, what will eventually be our recommendations when determining a reduction in force master list. Uh, before we ever consider a reduction in force, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna need to look at our attrition rate. Uh, there's this normal attrition in general, uh, for all employers, employment. But we'd consider that first to determine whether or not we even need a reduction in force. Uh, we understand that prior to do, uh, prior to a reduction in force, we would want to prioritize transferring personnel to jobs that are open. It may mean a different job, it may be in a different workplace, but the intent is, uh, to maintain employment and limit the use of a reduction in force if and whenever that may be necessary. Ultimately, the design team had the highest priority of, under the circumstances, we want to ensure we maintain and retain, uh, the most effective teachers as possible. So after attrition, after transferring staff around to fill the needs to avoid a reduction in force, if one were ever to occur, uh, the priority is determined based on, did the individual receive a district level reprimand, a formal discipline in the last two years? Then we would go to the next list of, did any continuing teacher, did any probationary teacher receive an ineffective evaluation? Then if we have to go a little deeper in a reduction of force, again, it doesn't happen all the time. It's if and whenever. We're just preparing, who knows, in long-term future. Uh, if we have to go a little bit deeper, uh, we would focus on those with four or more developing, the developing classification, uh, rating, uh, based on state statute for continuing teachers. Then we would proceed with probationary teachers, uh, as far as determining the priority, the master list, if, if and when we had to do a RIF. I believe if we did the numbers last year, uh, the list would, the maximum list would be 201, but that would also mean, um, we have a significant, have, have to have a significant reduction of force because we hire four to 500 teachers every year anyway. So the need to go any deeper means, uh, something significant happened to funding in education state and federal level. With that said, um, I'm open for any questions or feedback. I also want to thank our design team. Appreciate the teachers and principals in particular who were on the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne, very much for your update and the report from the committee. And I, and the board also would like to thank the committee members who gave of their time to come up with this thoughtful revision. Do any of the board members have questions on the revisions and, and, um, revisements of the policy? Any questions? Mr. Wing, I have one. You've got one?
Oh.
I'm sorry, Ms. Walden. Please go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I was, I was, uh, trying to find the document so I could ask the question. So it says that, uh, you know, for this policy, so we have our, our teachers, and then a teacher could be, uh, it's a classroom teacher, instructional coach, certified specialist, counselor, speech and language pathologist. Do we have a comparable RIF document for, like, directors, administrators, vice principals, non-classroom staff? Does that policy exist?
In all honesty, administrators are year-to-year contract, and the governing board approves it annually. So RIF is not really as, as applicable as it would be for a teacher where they have teacher contract rights stated in state statute. For administrators, uh, the governing board has to non-renew an administrator prior to April 15th each year.
So I know, you know, things can change. Like, we have decline in enrollment or things like that. So is there a process in place that if we were looking at a reduction in force, that we would look at non-essential staff or look at some of our, our, our top-heavy staff and our directors or administrators and that kind of staff before we would go to this RIF policy? Is there a process to look at that overall employee staffing?
I mean, to begin, I think all staff are essential to public education. Uh, they just serve various roles. But with that said, uh, if we have to get into position of a reduction in force, uh, all staffing considerations, uh, are made. Again, going back to the certified master list, uh, reduction of force required by state statute for financial purposes, uh, we have to put a policy and regulation in place that provides these details. Uh, but the board could also reject it, uh, as well. They just won't be able to revise or pick and choose who's on that list to approve or, or reject. But definitely, if we're at, we're, if we're in a position that we're doing reduction force, all staffing is being looked at. All staff, all projects, everything.
All right. And so just to make sure I understand you, so we have a RIF policy over this, uh, what's defined as teachers, and that policy exists per regulations, but there's no law or regulation that says that we have to have a RIF for other staffing? that says that we have to have a RIF for other staffing?
We do have in our Mesa working additions, reduction in force procedures for classified, but technically you don't have to have it per state statute. The complicated part for classified is you may have 500 position, or 500 bus drivers, for example, let me just throw that title out, where, how do you determine the bus driver if you need to reduce force a handful or something like that? So, we have some procedures in place there.
Okay. I think, you know, if we are at a point like, let's say declining enrollment or reorganization, that the people that are directly in the classroom, if that, if the number of people needed to teach our students, if we have less students, if it's shrinking, then are we going to have a top-down approach to looking at a reduction in force? Like, do we have anything in place to ensure that we are looking at a top-down approach if we have office staff and excess administrators and all these directors? You know, we have a large curriculum team, if there's less students, there's a smaller budget, and to make sure that we look at the whole staffing? So, that's, that's my concern, you know, with having a policy for this. But I think you explained it, like, we don't have to have a policy, or if such an instance arose, we don't have to approve the reduction in force, we can send it back to the drawing table.
Correct, and I believe the policy, excuse me, the policy does share that we'd be working collaboratively to develop what the actual RIF need is. Most, most, most of us think of a reduction in force because overall funding has, has changed, but there are certain funding sources that may have changed that only affects those funded out of that account code, for example, or that funding source. So, it is by, based on different circumstances, if we even need to do a reduction in force at some point in time.
Yeah. Well, I think the good news for the district is that the state's increased funding to education by 50% in the last three years, so even though there's, you know, the demographics of Mesa's changing, that we have less students, we have a lot more funding from the legislature than we've ever had, so that's good news for us.
I'd like to make mention of, I'd like that we start with attrition first. You know, that's the folks that will leave or will be leaving, but I really like that the committee has decided to adopt a more objective approach in that we are retaining our highly-rated teachers. And, and I think though we all know that evaluations can be subjective, we're all teachers, we know, we know that, and certainly employees have the right to appeal an evaluation, but certainly if student outcomes is heavily based in quality instruction, then we better be hanging on to our highly-qualified teachers. And I commend the committee for acknowledging that and putting it in writing. That's, we need to protect the integrity of instruction in the classroom, and that's, that's what I see what we're doing here in this, in this policy. Any other comments? Okay. Mr. Wing, I know you have joined us from Tucson where you're at a Arizona State Personnel Conference, and we appreciate your, your time tonight, and, and that you joined us, that you thought it important enough to join us virtually, and we hope that you have a good conference.
We have a few more items on the board agenda, looking forward to it.
Indeed, we do. Thank you, Mr. Wing. Okay. We have no action items, so we have two discussion items, and the first discussion item is our safety and security update, and we have three individuals that will, that are crucial in our attempt to provide security and safety for not only our students but our staff as well, and that is Mrs. Williams, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Sanders, and they are going to present our security and safety update at this time.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my honor to begin the presentation tonight, and then I will turn the microphone over to Mr. Moore and Mr. Sanders to discuss some recommendations that we will be bringing forward to you for conversation tonight and hopefully approval at the next governing board meeting. So, I'd like to start our presentation, though, Chad, if you would put up our slides, with sharing with you, just as we start every meeting, I think that security is woven into everything we do, but when we live into this promise, we are making sure that students feel safe. So, this is one way of addressing safety, and tonight we're going to show you some other physical ways that we address safety. So, I shared this with you in the spring, so I'm not going to read all of these to you, but I'm just going to remind you of some of the things we put in place over the past several years, including investments from our 2012 and our 2018 bond elections that have allowed us to do some of these things, and an additional district capital that we've dedicated to this work, and thankfully, some of the personnel that are in, in our security offices are supported through our MNO override. So, I wanted to make sure that I shared that information with you. A reminder again that we have over 3,000 cameras district-wide that are monitored in each school, and department can monitor their own cameras, but we also have a district site in the bank building that monitors those cameras during the day and during the evening and overnight hours. We do, in the spring, I shared with you that we had applied for our School Resources Officers Grant, and I am pleased to share with you, as I did in status, that we are funded for all of our school resources this year, officers. So, we have officers at our junior highs and high schools that are funded through the grant. We also have cameras on buses, we've continued to work on our secured entryways, our secured lobbies. I will tell just a little birdwalk of a story, I've been touring schools at conferences I've been to in the past several weeks, and watching, looking at their secured lobbies, I will say we do it better. They have secured lobbies, but they're a very small location, and they still, in order to have a conversation with somebody behind the glass, you have to go into the office, which makes it no longer a secure lobby. So, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that our operations team has had in designing these offices so that our public can interact in that secure lobby and get their questions answered and access to their students. So, some additional things that you know about, that we do continuously, our drills, fire, for fire, lockdown and evacuation. We added this year, and over the past probably year and a half, our Narcan trained staff in the case of overdoses of fentanyl, and that's been fantastic through our health offices and our security officers, and we have opened that up to administrators, if they'd like to be trained, they can receive that training also. And we do have a district security committee that meets regularly to discuss these issues and have participated in the recommendations we're bringing forward tonight. So, I'm going to click the next slide and turn it over to Mr. Sanders to discuss our recommendations.
Madam President, members of the board, as you recall, several months ago, we brought to you a list of school safety items that we're seeking recommendation. Tonight, we're bringing three items that we would like to implement, and like Ms. Williams said, in a future board meeting, seek approval. The first item we have, first technology we're talking about is collaboration with the Mesa City Police Department, the city of Mesa, and us, of course, and is dealing with giving them direct access to our security cameras, and so that the real-time time center, crime center can have access to that. And I'll let Mr. Moore give a brief description of what the RTC is and how important that is.
Thank you for having me tonight. The Real-Time Crime Center is run by the Mesa Police Department. The center basically has access to business, local businesses and residences, their cameras, if those businesses and residents give them permission to access those cameras, and they only access those cameras during a catastrophic event. If there's a 911 call, then they are able to pull up the cameras in that area. If there's an incident at one of our schools, the benefit will be tremendous for the safety and security of our schools. If there, you know, heaven forbid, there's an active shooter or there's any other major incident, then they can pull up those cameras and direct the first responders to the correct locations. If it turns out, we get a lot of false reports, so that would help them in that regard as well, because they would be able to scale back the response if it turns out to be a false report.
Anyone have any questions of the security cameras that would put Mesa Public School cameras in the Real-Time Crime Center? No? Okay. Thank you.
So, the next, the next technology we talked about was weapons detection systems. Again, this is the same technology used at, you know, sporting events, concerts, even in the airport. It looks for weapons. We did take administrators from the high schools, including Eva, to take a visit to a Westside school to look at this technology in use, and we'll show a video of that here in a second. But we did look at that, we did get some good feedback, they asked questions, they got to see it in action from start, from setup all the way to the kids coming through. So, that's what we're looking to do, that, and we're looking at implementing a pilot or testing it, using it as skyline, start off a skyline, iron out some of the processes and procedures there, and once we get that done, then we'd go up to the other secondary schools. Mr. Moore, you have anything you wanted to add to that?
The only thing I would add to that is it's a weapons detection system, not a metal detection system, unlike at the airport where they detect your keys. The purpose of this is mainly to pick up guns and large knives and to keep the flow and be less intimidating.
Okay, thank you. Chad, can you play the video for us, please? So, here's the, here's the video of the technology in action at Verado High School.
Things, if I could talk over the video real quick. Notice that they can be personalized, so they can be wrapped with school logos if we so choose, and they are removing, laptops do tend to set them off, so they are, they are passing those over, and the students are. We've seen it both ways, where they pass like this, or they hold them over their head, and they can go through without it setting off.
If you notice at the back, there was a table there, something did set off, and there was somebody that was asking the students to look at their, to put them, first one in the back.
I wanted to share one other thing, excuse me. We saw one entrance there, our schools are large enough that we would have these deployed at multiple entrances so that it wouldn't be a long line in one entrance trying to get in. We're anticipating, depending on the size of the campus, three to four, possibly five entrances that we would deploy these, this, this technology.
Yeah, I was going to say, our campuses are the size of small towns. I mean, there are towns in Iowa that don't have the population that we do at, like Red Mountain High School or Mountain View and Mesa. So, are any of the principals at, Mr. Mendez, you are here. Can, can you?
Mr. Tannerbaum.
And, and Mr. Tannerbaum, but I, but skyline is going to be our, our test site, our pilot. Do you, would you like to make any comments at this time as to the, the observations that you made and perhaps why you have, I don't know if you were voluntold or you volunteered, but either way, what, what you're expecting at skyline?
Either way, whatever's good for your organization, we're going to do it at skyline, so, right? We, you know, I think, I think Ms. Williams touched on it, the entry points, I think our, the size of our campus, our student population, I think it's a great pilot for these weapon detections, because we believe we've got it nailed down to about three entry points on our campus, we have the staff to implement and oversee it, I think it's allowed to collect some really good data on how long it takes for this process to happen in the morning, what kind of speed bumps you run into, and so, we're looking forward to it because I think if our district and our governing board approves this and likes to happen, we'll be a very good test run onto what this process looks like on any given day. At a school day running, we'll run about 2,200 kids through, where you're right, Red Mountain and Mesa and Mountain View, they're looking 3,500 plus. So, we'll be able to time it out and have multiple people oversee it and give us suggestions so that we can move the work forward.
If I could ask you, what impressed you about this, this system? And, and why, why should we do it?
I think the impressive aspect is that it, it keeps the flow of entering school quick. It's not, it is not like the airport. It's no different, I always said, you know, you go to a sporting event or anything, you walk through them pretty quick. And so, I think the disruptive to coming into school, you know, we have a practice of greeting every kid in the parking lot as they're walking in anyways, and it would just be one more thing they would walk through to come onto our campus. I think, you know, safety is important, we want our staff to feel safe on campus, we want our, our kids to feel safe on campus, we want our parents to feel safe, they know they're going to a school that is looking out for the best interest of their children, and so, I think in all aspects, I think it's a very positive thing for Mesa Schools.
Any other comments?
I have a question. So, is there going to be an SRO at, at the station?
So, what we plan on, we have two on our campus at this point, we plan on having three entry points, we will staff each one with multiple security guards, administrators, and some teachers who will be on duty, and our SROs will essentially be on call in the event that one goes off, and we have a security and admin there as the first touch point with our SROs right there as well.
Okay. And then, and this might be for, for Mrs. Williams, but are we looking at making these permanent at the campuses where they'd be permanently there or on a rotating schedule? And if that's something that's confidential, then let me know.
No, thank you for asking that way, both ways, I appreciate that. We plan on buying enough for each campus to have them on campus at all times, but the good news is they weigh about 25 pounds and can be moved around campus, so they could be used at different events, like football games, graduation, so they don't have to just stay at the entrances for the beginning of the day, they could be used for other events.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanders, would you mind sharing the story from the student that you talked to out at Alverado?
So, we had a couple of aha moments when we talked, we did the visit at the Canyon View. We asked a couple of students how they felt about walking through that, and their first reaction is, I feel safer, knowing that everybody's been scanned or it's been, they've gone through it. The other aha moment, and I think, right, touched on it, was that the principal said that because kids are habitual and they walk through the same gate or through the same pass, the same staff are there, so they got to know every student's name, and they start, they greeted them every morning, good morning, you know, Johnny, how are you doing, come on through. So, there was some, some good aha moments there, but, you know, like the student said that they felt safer, that they knew that they were, everybody was going through those. And the last slide, the last technology, as soon as it comes up here, is the vape system, and I'll let Mr. Moore touch on that because that was one of his little babies that he was pretty proud of.
So, the, yes. So, currently we have a pilot program for the vape sensors at Red Mountain High School, we have them in two bathrooms. The basic way it works is, unlike a smoke detector that will detect smoke or a heat detector that detects heat, a vape detector detects the chemicals emitted from the vapes. So, what happens is the system, these sensors are integrated into our camera system. So, I was actually at Red Mountain two days after we installed it in the bathrooms there, and we were having a meeting unrelated to anything with vapes, but we were looking at cameras, and all of a sudden, it started to alarm, and the assistant principal said, oh, we just had a vape detection, and so, I got to see it in action. When the vape sensor goes off, it triggers the cameras that are in, obviously, we don't have cameras in the bathrooms, but we have cameras right outside the bathroom. Soon as it set it off, the cameras showed up on the screen, it told them exactly what bathroom it was, their dispatcher there then dispatched security to that bathroom, and they caught two kids coming out, and it turns out they had vape pens on them. So, my understanding, they are getting about 15 alerts a day, and they're catching about five kids a day with vape.
This is an area that we've had feedback on from students, we heard them last year talking to us about concerns about people vaping in the bathrooms, makes it uncomfortable place to be, and so, this is one of the ways that we are bringing to you a first-step solution to addressing that concern.
Yep. I know, I know that Principal Gilmore said it's his number-one concern.
For the vaping sensors, are we looking at just junior high and high school or elementary school as well? Because I'm hearing some of the sixth graders are doing that.
We want to start at high school, we'll move them to junior highs, and then we'll look at the effectiveness, making sure that we're doing well, and then hopefully, I know Dr. Forliss's goal would be to have them in all of our schools. Dr. Forless's goal would be to have them in all of our schools.
Excuse me, can I ask a question? Mr. Tannenbaum, could you tell us some of your experiences with, as I know, years ago, I was attending a CAC meeting at Red Mountain, and this was the topic of parents. And I know that administrators have struggled with drug use on campus, and, and how to, how to tackle it, and this is, this is really something that our families, our kids, and our schools are really struggling with. So I, can, can I get some observations from you as, as the, as the pilot?
Yeah, absolutely. I completely agree in regards to, you know, a significant problem. We, we as administrators, we talk outside of the district, within the district, and it would come across as your number-one concern for, for students, from a, from a discipline matrix standpoint. But also, more importantly, is, as mentioned before, is our other students who are just trying to use the restroom, and kids make choices, and that's okay, they're kids, you know, our, our experience with them, with this is, has it been a deterrent for us? I would say it has, absolutely. It is talked about, our kids know about it, we have, you know, sure, we have situations that it comes up and alarms, and we find out as we go through that process that a student had chosen to make that decision, but it allows us to have an opportunity to talk with that student, go through the process, support that student, communicate with their families as well, take them through some of the programs that Mesa Public Schools has, like Wonder with them, for continued education in regards to the choices that they're, they're made. And it's, I, I, I believe it's working for us. The day Mr. Moore mentioned early on, when it was becoming well-known, sure, very frequent, and as students are, are starting to, to see there's prevention tools that are there, trying to support and keep the campus safe, and the restroom safe as well, it has, it has slowed down at different points because of, I, I believe, because of the, the sensors in the restroom.
Okay. So you, so it's worth it?
I do, I believe it is worth it.
Something that we should consider for other schools? Would you recommend it to other principals?
I would, I mean, we've, the, the process that we've had, and the communication that we've had, I mean, we've worked through some of the small, small kinks with there, but there's lots of communication in some of our student advisory boards that I've had with some of our students, they've made note of it, and they've, they've signed off on it, which I think is an important piece when you hear a student that has been using the tip line to communicate, they're frustrated with what's taking place in the bathroom, and they see adults hearing them and trying to utilize technology to do something about it. And, and that, that was, that was good feedback from, from those particular students.
That's excellent feedback, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry to have interrupted you, Ms. Williams, please go ahead.
Uh, anything is for Mr. Thompson?
Just want to remind the governing board that in the spring, you approved the SmartTag system, which is also part of our security solution. Really, security starts at the bus, right? We, we start engaging our students in their neighborhoods on, on the sidewalk. So, the two things that will require is an ID for every student, and, and the reason some people say, well, why not just a bus rider, and it's because we have incidents where you might have a field trip, we've had incidents where we've evacuated a school, and sadly to say, in the news, there was a bad bus accident in Ohio today, and it's critical to know who's on that bus, so that we can help first responders, make sure we've got everybody taken care of. So, all of that information is something we just do not have access to right now. So this system will, it, it, it is a bus safety system first and foremost, for us to know who's on the bus, when they got on, when they got off, if a child is lost, or on, or parents just don't know where they are at some moment, we have a whole new level of information about when they got on, when they got off, and where they got off at. So, all of that's gonna really improve the security of our, our transportation system and our buses.
So, tonight, it's designed for you to ask questions, have a discussion if there's anything else you'd like to know, but next meeting, we will be bringing to you three things. An agreement with the city of Mesa to allow them to have access to our cameras, and as Mr. Moore said, it would be for critical incidents, 911 calls, emergencies of a sort, they don't have access to just monitor our cameras whenever they want, it's, it's a very specific usage. So that would be the first thing we would be bringing to you, and then, the purchase and use vape detectors and metal, metal detectors in our schools would be the other two that we'll bring. The piloting of the bus program and the need for IDs will begin in the spring, and so we will be rolling that out, you've already approved that purchase, so we will be rolling out those procedures, beginning in the, later on in the spring. So we'd happy to answer any questions at this time.
I have a question about the student ID, because I was at Westwood for some class presentations, and I was really surprised, because the students in the presentation said that they actually wanted this, because they thought that they could utilize it down the road, maybe for incentives for having like an open campus to leave at lunch, so they'd know if you left at lunch, or maybe use grades as a motivator, if you get good grades, you can leave at lunch. Does this SmartTag, I know you can't say if, that'll ever be an option for those students, you know, that's up to Westwood, but, but with the SmartTag, is that, that kind of tech that would enable that, that ability to see if people have left or, or not, if they have to check in and out?
Our tag does not have that capability, but we are looking at other systems that have a synergy, has, has introduced that for their next release to be able to, they call it Hall Pass, to where you can, kids can come in, scan their ID, they check in if they're tardy, they can check after lunch, leave their class, and it gives them a time. So it's kind of a tracking system for when the skid, the students leave campus or leave class, so that, that's coming.
I, I think it's important to note that the, the ID is really just an RFI access card, which is really just a plastic card with a copper wire inside that has a number on it. That's all it is, it's universal, whenever you see somebody scanned going in a building or whatever, that's what they're using. So, the ID itself could be, be used with other systems besides SmartTag, so that's, that's the bus system, but we could have the Hall Pass system, we could have, we could use it to access certain doors, but this is cost and expense and, and challenges in our facilities, but eventually, those are future ideas. I hadn't thought about the kids using it for getting in and out of school, but, again, with more knowledge and better tracking, maybe, maybe other things are possible, I'm not gonna speak for a high school principal there, but even getting around campus, I think, will become part of their daily lives, as to what rooms they can access, and what parts of campus they might have access to at certain times, as we, as we look forward to where this could go, but we're not there yet today.
Yeah, no, just, just that, that basic tracking, and thank you for explaining that very basic tech, you know, we're not, we're not data collecting on any students.
It's not GPS, yeah, it's very important to understand, this is not a, there's no tracking of GPS, it's simply a card that does nothing unless it's put up against something that's powered, and that powered device is what reads the, the copper wire and knows that there's a number on it. But the device, the tags themselves, they call them SmartTags, which is kind of funny, they're just plastic and wire, right? And so, sometimes people get the wrong idea what these, what these kind of access cards do, they are very, very basic, so.
And then, I just have another question, too, so, for the, the security systems and stuff we've talked about, what part of the budget is that funding earmarked for?
The funding for all of the items you've seen this evening is our DAA capital funding, it was included in our budget prep in the spring. So this was not bond-funded or any other source.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Davis?
I just have a logistic question. If it's raining with the metal detectors, it doesn't rain very often, but we can't even drive in rain in Arizona, let alone, I just picture kids trying to get laptops out. Did, and do they have them covered, where in?
So, we did talk about, that's why we're starting this at Skyline, they already have canopies set up at all their entrances, and we're talking about what we're gonna do.
Doesn't rain at Skyline?
Well, it's not just the rain, too, it's the sun. I mean, it, we want to make it more comfortable to come in for the staff as well, so we're talking about, you know, some kind of shade structures at all of the entrances for these devices.
So does this apply to staff as well?
I'm sorry?
Would staff go through the metal dete, the weapons detectors?
No, this would just be made, this would be for the student entry.
Okay, okay. Could, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on the spot of, of applying it. Can you think of an incident that perhaps happened at a Mesa Public Schools, where any of this technology would have really been of great assistance in providing safety and security?
Well, I hate to put Red Mountain on the spot twice, but last year, I think it was, that we had the student with the gun. And just today, we had a student at Red Mountain who, it was reported he had a gun, turns out he had a knife. It was a folding knife, which I was told was six to seven inches long, and so I made an inquiry today, said, would that have detected? And the answer was yes. You can scale down the setting as lo, as low as you want, the idea is to pick up weapons and large knives. You can set it to go pick up keys, but that would defeat the purpose of it being a fast system. So, in the incident that happened today, what I'm being told is it would have picked up that knife.
And Mr. Moore, what would you see as the advantage to having the link with the crime center at Mesa, in, at the city of Mesa?
Oh, tremendous.
Can you think of an incident that might have happened on one of our campuses, where police would have responded, that, that, that type of, of coordination linkage, literally physical linkage with cameras would have helped?
Well, we had an incident at Skyline last year, where somebody called in an active shooter in the cafeteria, and the cavalry was coming, I mean, they called in everyone. If they had the real-time crime center access to our cameras, they could have downgraded that immediately, because they would have seen, oh, there's, there's nothing going on in the cafeteria, there's nothing going on in the campus at all. So that's one incident that I can think of.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just trying to imagine how it would be applied, the technology would be applied is, is, is very important. Okay, is there any other questions or concerns?
I just want to say, thank you for, you know, bringing this to us tonight, and, you know, I'm a big 2A supporter, but there's no such thing as a gun-free zone if you don't have a metal detector, because it only applies to the people that follow the rules. So, and that is the standard for having a true gun-free zone, is you have armed security, and you have a metal detector, and so if we're really gonna be serious about a gun-free zone, then that's, that's what it looks like, that's the recommendation, you know, professionally from people that really support the Second Amendment.
Thank you.
I also want to make sure that, that the public knows that top, the top priority of this district is the safety and security of students and staff. And I think tonight, we've demonstrated that, obviously, we haven't talked about all of the things, because you don't do that. We don't talk about all the things, because then they wouldn't be safe. But, there are other things that we're gonna have to do to make sure that our students are safe, and that means securing front offices, that means reconfiguration, that means construction, and it means that if the safety and security of the people in the building are a top priority, we're gonna have to reprioritize where our money is going. And there, that means that some projects aren't gonna get done. But, the safety and security is the most important factor, and I, I thank you, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Moore, Ms. Williams, for, for making sure that we, that, that this issue is brought to our attention, that we pay it attention, and we keep it our top priority.
Thank you for that.
And, and whatever we have to do to make sure that kids are safe, because if kids don't feel safe, it doesn't matter what the quality of instruction is, they're not gonna receive it. And so, I'm, I'm very grateful to the job that you all do to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words.
Excuse me, the next item that we have to talk about is the Community Engagement Scorecard, and it's the last item on the agenda, and this was the, the teaser that we talked about at the beginning of, the beginning of the meeting. You've seen some posters with QR codes, and you're, you're like going, what the heck is going on? So, I'm, I wanna, I wanna do a little bit of how we got here, what, what, what we're doing, and why, why that QR code is so darn important. How we got here was, as, as I'm sure you know, Mesa was a finalist at the All-America City Conference in Denver in June, and I was privileged to be on that team of presenters, and during a, a meeting of elected officials, I found out about the National, National Civics League's Democracy Innovations Project, and that three pilot communities would be selected. And, whoops. Mr. Sanders, what are you doing to me, man?
I'm sorry.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing my own echo there. Are we good? Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you. So, what attracted me to the project was that it, the description of the project is, better public meetings are possible, sustainable, and measurable. And I thought, okay, what their goal is with the, with the project is to ensure civil productive dialogue among people with different backgrounds and interested board meetings. And, boy, our board meetings reflect that truly. To use proven tools and practices in accordance with the Open Meeting Law, but to provide information, gather input, and report on impact of decisions taken by the board, this is what our board meetings are about, where we, we provide information, we gather input, we make decisions, and we, and we report on the impact of those decisions. This is important stuff that we do, because it talks about how we're doing the job that we do, which is to improve what kids can do and what kids know. And, we want to make sure that our public is satisfied with our board meetings. So, I went to Dr. Forless, and we began a conversation with the National Civics League team, and our objective was clear. Our board meetings, we wanted them to be more civil, more informative, and more productive, and that we model the attitudes and skills of the portrait of a graduate. So, we brought, we talked with the, with the project, the National Civics League's team, and on July 11th, if you remember, the board discussed the Democracy Innovations Project and decided to move forward with it. So, then began a whole series of steps, and the first step was that the NCL, the National Civics League team, began conducting community interviews. They asked us for certain stakeholders, and, and, and various peoples that either we work with as a district, or who are regular observers of our meetings or participants, and, and those interviews, there were, there are more than fifteen of them, are gonna inform the board and superintendency and help us to determine next step. But then, the next step that we had to do was start beginning of taking a look at what is called an Engagement Scorecard. Think a survey. I know when I go to Kohl's, and I check out, and they give me my receipt, they always circle the bottom, and they say, will you please take our survey of customer satisfaction? Basically, the Engagement Scorecard is a survey, a survey for people who have been at our meeting, either virtually or in person. And they're, they're gonna tell us how, how we did. Was, was the meeting civil? Was there great information? Was the, could the information have been better? Did we seek input before we made decisions? Was the meeting well-run? Was it organized? We're trying to make our meetings more productive, more efficient. So, Dr. Forless and I met with NCL, and we learned more about the scorecard, and then, what we did is to then engage more staff members with their staff members, and it was really a, a true collaboration between MPS and NCL. There were many discussions, had many edits, which led to the creation of the scorecard, better known as a survey. And that's gonna provide relevant information to the district, particularly to the board, to the superintendency, so we can have better meetings. It was announced that we are a pilot. The National Civics League, we are one of the three committee, communities that is a pilot. This is at no charge to the district, the other communities that were accepted in the pilot program was Fayetteville, North Carolina, and Boulder, Colorado. We are the only school district they are working with, Boulder is the only city, and Fayetteville is the only police commission that they're working with. In October, after we did the engagement In October, after we did the Engagement Scorecard, we then developed a communications plan. And that communications plan includes news releases from both organizations, both the National Civics League and MPS. We shared information of us being a pilot program on social media. But today is the day. Today is the first day that the public is going to be able to rate your experience in person or online of this school board meeting. The QR code, which is posted on posters in this room and will be posted during the actual live screening of this meeting, as well as the YouTube version of this meeting. So anybody who observes the meeting, whether virtually or in person, will be able to say how we did. How did we do? How was our meeting? This survey, it's, I want you to think of threes. It's a three-minute survey that you're going to do on your phone after using the QR code. And we're going to ask you to do it three times. This meeting, the next meeting on the 28th, and then our December meeting, which is on the 12th. And from that, we will get some baseline data. We will use the data from the scorecard, better known as the survey, to help us figure out perhaps better practices, better ways that we can run this meeting, so that we can have the most productive meetings that engage our public and strengthen our relationship with our stakeholders. So we urge you to take a picture of the QR code, take the three-minute survey, do it three times, and let us know how we're doing. In, on December, I believe it's going to be December 11th. On December 11th, the NCL team and the MPS team will actually meet, and they're going to give us information from the interviews. We're going to have some baseline data from the surveys, because if you've noticed one theme in this meeting, from our study session to the end of agenda item, one of the things we're working on is continuous improvement, whether it's in our classrooms, whether it's in our schools, or whether it's in the boardroom. We are always going to seek to improve. So on December 11th, we'll meet with the team, and we'll start taking a look at the data and seeing perhaps some better practices that will make this a better experience for more people. So we encourage you to use the QR code, do the survey, three minutes of your time, three times. Thank you very much. Is there any questions or concerns from my colleagues?
A quick clarification. You don't need to take it three times tonight.
That would be correct. Sorry.
November 28th, and then December 12th. Those will be our three meetings that we are collecting baseline data from.
Tonight, the next meeting, and the next meeting. The next three meetings. Right. Right. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Any comments or concerns?
I have a question. So sometimes on surveys, it feels like maybe it's asking you questions, but it's not asking you the questions that you want, like, answered, or there's feedback you want to give, but the survey has limitations where you feel like you can't give the feedback. So, and I'm asking this in seriousness, is there like a place to give, like a feedback on the survey?
There is.
Yeah, there is. Okay.
Yep, because we had our people who know Mesa, and we know people are going to want to make comments. And sure enough, yep, we will have that capability.
So they can give their feedback on the survey, like if there's questions they wish were asked? Okay.
Because certainly, we don't know everything that we should have asked, and we're looking to improve. Continuous improvement is the theme.
And that's like, from my personal experience, it's always my problem with surveys. You know, I'm like, "You didn't ask me the question I want you to ask me," you know? Yeah, I'm not giving the information I want, so, because I'm assuming it's something we can improve. Okay.
And hopefully, we'll improve the better practices for a better meeting as well. And perhaps down the road, we're thinking of collaborating with the city. And it might be the Mayor's Education Workforce Roundtable. It might be more collaborations with city officials and the city council, with the school board, and maybe even the Mesa Chamber, and helping them make their meetings better as well. So we're excited about the opportunity, and we hope that the public will support us by taking the survey three times in the next three meetings. Okay. And before we adjourn, I know that I express the board's wishes for everyone to have a happy Thanksgiving, our students, their families who entrust us with the education. I also, at this time, want to say how grateful I am for the community who approved the budget continuation. That's going to provide the funds for competitive salaries for our employees. And, you know, Arizona teachers are still some of the lowest paid in the country, but this community invests in its employees, and I, as board president, am very grateful for that. And I hope that you all have a very happy and safe Thanksgiving with family and friends, and that our employees and our students and our families enjoy the time off. With that, I'll happily entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote? With a vote of 5-0, you have adjourned the meeting. Thank you all for being here and your interest in Mesa Public Schools, and most importantly, our students.